Good morning and welcome to the County Council of Anarondo County's November tenth, two thousand and twenty work session. Madam Secretary, will you call the roll?
Mr. Volkey?
Present.
Mr. Pruski?
Yeah.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian is absent. Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy? Ms. Lacy, I see you, but you're muted. Cannot hear you. I see you. I'm marking you present and love to work on getting your audio up. Ms. Pickard?
Present.
And Madam Legislative Counsel, Ms. Schuet?
Present.
And Madam Auditor, Ms. Smith?
Present.
Hey, Madam Chair, all are present with Ms. Rodvian absent.
Great, thank you so much. So just so everybody knows, we've got twelve bills and a resolution to work through today, so we're gonna kick it off with the Administration's Bill number eighty-six twenty. Mr. Barron? You've got your crew ready?
Hold on one second. I do, I do.
And just a reminder-
Maybe it's something inappropriate for a second.
A reminder to everyone that, much like a regular council meeting, it's really important that everyone state their name every time they speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron for the Administration. Eighty-six, oh, first off, excuse me, I have a dream team at the table with me. Ms. Lori Rhodes, our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Mr. Matt Johnston, our Environmental Policy Director from Office of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Kai Ziegler, Ms. Lori Allen, and Ms. Kelly Krenitz, and from Office of Law, Ms. Kinley Bray. Eighty-six twenty is a bill, the purpose of which is to amend the procedural plan review timelines, allowing for additional time for the applicant to prepare their applications, which will reduce the number of time extension modification requests that add cost to development and strain on staff resources. This is a process bill, not a policy bill. The Administration's intent with this bill is to make the process better for the county to administer, for the applicant as they are going through it, and for the public to understand. It amends requirements for site development plans to be consistent with sketch and final site plan checklist requirements as determined by impacted reviewing agencies. Instead of listing site plan criteria individually in the code, eighty-six twenty adds exemptions under Title IV, the Site Development Plan, for low-impact uses that are either temporary, lasting no more than a day with no permanent changes to the land, codified uses that have been exempt by policy based on limited thresholds, or are protected by state law. We will be offering several amendments, as we mentioned at the previous council meeting. Want to thank members of the council for your acceptance of our request for a hold. You should have been sent mid to late last week a package of six amendments. The Administration is happy to answer any questions, or if we want to just jump in to the amendments, the Administration will be requesting at this council. Defer to you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do my colleagues have questions before we go into amendments? I think you can just go through the amendments, Pete.
I'd be happy to. The amendment number one, does everybody have them? First of all, make sure that they were shared with the council. I'm seeing some nods, so I think we're okay. Amendment number one, or Amendment A, updates the period of time which a developer must complete subdivision to conform with the language in subsection seventeen-three, three oh four A of the proposed bill. This is the error, Councilwoman Hare, or the inconsistency that Councilwoman Hare caught in, I believe, the previous work session when we discussed this bill. Amendment B, this amendment limits the exemption to the site development process for seasonal or permanent outdoor restaurant seedings as at establishments existing as of the effective date of the bill, and requires a site development plan for new developments, including such seasonal or permanent outdoor restaurant seating areas. This amendment deletes the proposed exemption for a cumulative increase of impervious surface of no more than five thousand square feet on a property outside of the critical area. It removes this line in its entirety. We'll can correct that in the next amendment, which is Amendment D, which Amendment D changes the Site Development Plan exemption from an accessory use to, or from an accessory use as a produce market to uses accessory to farming consisting of up to twelve hundred square feet of cumulative floor area for which the proposed cumulative impact of disturbance is less than five thousand square feet. This is for farming only, and it's a result of the agritourism bills that are before you. It clarifies coverage versus floor area. Amendment E is a technical amendment to correct a typographical error in seventeen dash four dash two oh one A-one, to remove the word of. Amendment F, this amendment updates seventeen-four, two oh one A-three to mirror language regarding stormwater management concept plans in section seventeen-four, two oh one A-two of the proposed bills. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions regarding these amendments, or anything else related to eighty-six twenty? Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I'm not sure if this is really addressed in this bill or not, but I'm trying to understand how these changes and the overall sort of deadline on when a plan dies and things like that, if they are impacted at all by planning and zoning's review timelines and what, what effect, I guess, planning and zoning review timelines, whether it takes thirty days, sixty days, six months in some cases, does that have any impact on all of this?
I'm gonna ask our Planning and Zoning Director to answer that, or to direct it to one of his team.
Good morning. Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. I don't believe it will at all. I'm going to also ask Lori and Kelly if they have any thoughts on that.
Lori, you're muted.
This is Lori Allen from Planning and Zoning. The idea of that particular amendment was to be sure that sketch plans or preliminary plans that were approved are not approved indefinitely. I don't believe that there's any impact on the other process changes that are the other parts of the bill.
Okay, Jessica Hare, District Seven, one follow-up. So I guess my question is, let's say, so this eighteen-month clock starts ticking, and there's a submission to Planning and Zoning and Planning and Zoning pays six months to return it. I mean, do we have a time limit in there for Planning and Zoning to look at things? Because I just want to make sure that if we're setting an outside deadline on this, that we also are returning things timely.
Okay, this is Lori Allen again from Planning and Zoning. I believe the second question is separate from your first question. There's not a timeline for PZ to return comments, and that's primarily due to the fact that we don't control when the agencies send us their comments. We can control our staff, you know, when our comments are ready, but there are state comments that come in from aviation or state that we don't have any control over when they do come in. And if it's part of our job, resolve conflict or inconsistencies, it's very hard to do if we only have part of the total we're expecting. So, I think the timeline on that makes it difficult. It's to have all the comments come in. We send out the letter with all the comments rather than piecemeal.
Okay, Jessica Hare, District Seven. So does that, I guess my question is then, would it be reasonable to sort of have a timeline for comments, but if the state takes longer to get back to you, or other agencies take longer to get back to you, that that overall, you know, hard stop on the plan gets extended automatically by whatever the overage is? I guess I just want to make sure that anyone who's submitting something, and they've done their part timely, if the delay is on the part of the state or some other agency, that they're not unfairly penalized for that.
I guess I'd have to defer that then back to Steve. I'm not sure, this is Lori Allen again, I'm sorry. Could do that, but it does come, it makes it complicated if we say all that, we have all the comments, but then you write the code such that says unless we don't have all the comments. I guess that's possible. It may be confusing to understand or to write, but I mean, I have a problem personally with that, but I think that would be a decision that the Planning and Zoning Office would have to make or weigh in on.
So if I could, Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer again, there are lots of factors that play into how these timelines work. Just recently, we're all aware with COVID and partial shutdowns that there was, with emergency orders, there was a pretty sophisticated tolling provision built in, which allowed extensions of time periods for virtually everything we were working on. With changes in laws, such as the Forest Conservation Bill from last year, a lot of time was put into how we grandfathered certain things. There may be occasions when there's a change in position from another department, or perhaps even ours, that may affect our willingness to allow for a broader extension. So there's a lot of factors. There's not going to be one answer to that question. While there are limits to how long a project is alive, there are or can be unique circumstances that allow it to extend. We have allowed that through modifications where we felt it was appropriate. We've had other instances where we've had a sketch plan that died five years ago, and the applicant engineers come back and say, well, you know, we'd like to continue it. And there were no extenuating circumstances. There was no tolling. There was no rationale that was workable for us to allow that to happen. So it's really not one answer fits all.
Jessica Hare, District Seven, if there's really not one answer fits all, does it suggest that maybe a hard deadline on when a final plan dies and voiding the prior plans doesn't make a lot of sense, that it should be a little bit more flexible than that?
I think, this is Kinley Bray from the Office of Law. Ms. Hare, I think we're talking at cross purposes, because it sounds like you're asking questions about both the timeline for which the Office of Planning and Zoning has to review and respond to a developer resubmit it. And then we're also talking about the eighteen-month period during which a developer has an approved plan, and then needs to get a final plan application filed, and then completed, in this particular case for subdivision, if we're talking about that instance. I don't think the two are necessarily linked. So the Office of Planning and Zoning is reviewing in a timely manner. The word in the code is promptly, and for minor subdivisions, there is a specific timeline. But for a major subdivision, the Office of Planning and Zoning would respond promptly, give a developer an opportunity to resubmit. The developer has a hard deadline for a resubmit. And then the Office of Planning and Zoning goes through and gets all of the comments that would be necessary from all of the reviewing agencies, comes back, and then provides a comment letter to the developer. This goes back and forth as many times as is necessary, as long as the developer is meaningfully responding to the comments and providing the information that has been requested. Once that approval is in hand, I think that what you're asking about, that eighteen-month timeline, that's really the time during which the developer needs to make a determination as to whether they're going forward with the plan. And so it's not really impacted by the Office of Planning and Zoning's review in the way that the resubmittals are, when a plan is under review. Because I think, I hope that answers your question.
Jessica Hare, District Seven, thank you, Ms. Bray. That was very helpful. One other question then, along that timeframe, with adequate public facilities and making sure you move forward with the project within eighteen months, is there any interplay between those two that might be problematic, or in, I don't know, that we're just not thinking of, or that I haven't thought of?
I don't have a specific answer for you. I think I would defer to Lori Allen, and again, this is Kinley Bray with the Office of Law. I would defer to Lori Allen and Kelly Krenitz, who are, you know, reviewing these on a daily basis and may be able to provide a specific example or perspective as to how that timeline impacts APF review.
Ms. Allen, you're muted.
Happens. This is Lori Allen. I didn't think that your question had to do with APF necessarily, but how, if there's anything that we're not into the middle timeframes versus the extent or, and the approval timeframes. And there is no connection between the two because they're two separate processes, and I don't think there would be any conflict between them.
Jessica Hare, District Seven, I think you said because there are two separate processes are not linked, so one will not impact the other. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Are there any other questions regarding these amendments? Oh, Mr. Volkey?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Sorry, I don't have my flag with me, so I made one. But in any event, I wanted to ask, I'm not sure who is the right person on the panel to sort of go into this with, but in terms of comments that come back from the Office of Planning and Zoning, what's the typical time period that you're seeing to get a response back to a developer or an applicant who has submitted a plan? And I'll just sort of leave it generally as any plan, because I'm getting feedback from people that they are seeing it takes not weeks, not even a month or two months, but multiple months. I have some people who've indicated to me that they're seeing five or more month delays from the time that they're submitting applications until the time that they're even getting comments back. And I understand that there's an argument that other departments are in play, other agencies of the state and places like that, but at a certain point, it seems to be getting a bit excessive. And I had heard that in the previous administration, there was sort of an informal policy that forty-five days was going to be the time limit when these comments were going to be turned around. That, I believe, then warped into a sixty-day period. I'm not sure what the current guidance is from Office of Planning and Zoning on how quickly they're getting comments back. So if anybody could address that concern, I'd appreciate it, because I'm considering putting in an amendment that would say that the Office of Planning and Zoning has sixty days from the date that the application is submitted to get comments back. So I'm curious whether that's needed and what you are seeing.
So if I could start, Steve Kai Ziegler, I'm Planning and Zoning Officer. I'm gonna start generally and ask Kelly and Lori to chip in, but one of the things I need to reaffirm for the council, and we do this, for example, every month with MBIA. In our Development Review Group, we have three Planning Administrators, three groups. One that deals with critical areas, a regional team, and a residential team. When you add those three groups up, we are about at fifty percent capacity in staffing. So we're short fifty percent of the folks we need to do Development Review. And we have been since I arrived on the scene in July two thousand and nineteen. Now, and we have a recruitment personnel system that is all codified and very unwieldy, but I will say we are starting to bring new staff in. A couple started in the last week. We have a few more coming in. We will be training those people up. So our resources are starting to grow, but they have not been there, and they have not been there for some time. I'm gonna say that every now and then, we will come across a situation where there is an application that is consistent, Mr. Volkey, with the way you described it. But it's almost always accompanied by an application or applications for modifications. It lacks required information. There is a complicated case history of the entitlement process with the property. So I would say, in my experience here, it's very uncommon, but it has happened. Staff tries very, very hard to move their projects through as fast as they can go. If you have an application that comes in with a modification, it complicates it significantly. And remember, that's a process that exists in Anarondo County that does not exist anywhere else in the state of Maryland. That's a complicating factor for how we do Development Review. I'd like to ask Kelly and Lori, you know, their perspectives of what they're seeing in terms of their time periods, and the quality of the applications that come in.
Okay, this is Lori Allen again.
Madam Chair, I apologize for interrupting. Just want to remind groups that are here to speak on a bill to please keep yourselves muted unless you're directly answering. Please don't sit with your mic unmuted. Thank you.
This is Lori Allen, and I agree completely with what Steve said. We have been short-staffed for some time. I have, or I had two reviewers to do, you know, a whole, all the residential, the majority of the residential projects in the county. And it's been that way for maybe a couple of years, and we've had such a hard time recruiting and getting people in in order to do work. And fortunately, as Steve said, now have people that we're training right now. And our goal is, within two months, start seeing a real reduction in the number of projects that we have on our list that we're to do, and hopefully get us back to the point where we're doing, you know, about sixty days, and that's what we're looking for, a sixty-day review time. So it's been very difficult to do what we're required to do with the app that we had.
This is Kelly Krenitz, and I apologize if you can't hear me. There's landscaping going on outside my window. But just to add to the, what Lori and Steve have already said, we also have some intake issues. I was notified yesterday by the Permit Center that it's taking them about twenty days to get an application up to us, you know, because of COVID things that normally would have been reviewed at submission. You know, the process was that the applicant would sit with a staff member and go through the application to make sure everything was in the application. Those are being dropped off, so that review's being done somewhat independently. There's some back and forth. So in some cases, it's, it can be two to three weeks between the time the applicant places those submissions in the drop box out front before they even come up to us for review. So we're already two or three weeks, you know, behind before we even get it to take a look at, and then you put the staffing issues on top of that. And, you know, right now, we're doing the best we can, but we are kind of, kind of strapped a little bit. So I think we would all have some concerns about that type of a due date, and being able to provide a quality, detailed review in a short time. I think most applicants, although they may complain that it takes a little longer, would rather have, you know, a good review, a complete review, than have us rush and potentially miss something, or, you know, just something get by us. So we would all have concerns with that.
Mr. Volkey, is this a follow-up, or can I move to Ms. Hare, and then you?
I have a follow-up real quickly, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Nathan Volkey, just a follow-up. I appreciate all the responses. So what I would like to get, and if you don't have it at your fingertips, that's okay, is what is the average time period that you are taking on reviews? So you can look at all the applications you've received, what the review time is for comments, and how long it's taking you. I would like to get that information, and I would also appreciate if I could get information on how many applications you have, because it's my understanding that as a result of COVID, that the number of applications has gone down substantially. That not only is, that's not the only factor, I should say. I think that coupled with the environment, the county right now, the number of applications has also been dropping. So between those two things, I'm curious to find out how many applications you're getting, and how that compares year over year to what you've had before, and the staffing that you've had now versus what you had previously, and how that compares to the time that you're doing reviews. So if I can get all that information, I'd really appreciate that. And I also would be interested, and maybe this is an inspections and permits or a permit center question, but I've heard from them on multiple permit issues, where they've indicated that they're turning things around in two weeks or less. So I'm baffled how it's taking twenty days for things that they're getting, docketing, turning around, and pushing back out, how it's taking twenty days for these applications to get to OPZ. So if anybody can get some information on what the holdup is there, and how it's taking three weeks to get an application from it being submitted to actually getting into your hands to start reviewing, I'd appreciate that.
This is Pete Barron with the Administration. Those are good questions. I think we can provide as much information as we have on that to you and the entire council.
Ms. Hare?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I was just gonna follow up on that, because I know, Mr. Barron, you had sent me some information back in, I believe, August, when I had a similar line of questions about the time delay that we were hearing from people with permits and planning and zoning. And at the time, the information you sent me had seemed like people were getting back to their sort of regular working totals as the percentages we had. I think at that point, Planning and Zoning said they had returned to ninety-five percent of their working totals. Inspections and permits were something similar. So I was hopeful that by this point, we would be getting kind of back to a more normal timeline. I don't know if this is possible, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, but I do wonder if there's some collaboration that might be able to go on between Planning and Zoning and inspections and permits. If it used to be that someone could walk in and, you know, someone would sit down with them and make sure that they had a complete application that was coming in, is there a reason why we can't set that up for a virtual meeting before somebody drops off their permit application and before it comes in for review? It seems like we might be able to head off a lot of this back and forth, and a lot of this review time or delay in time, if we're trying to make that happen on the front end virtually, so that by the time people come and drop it off, we don't have to write them back and say, hey, PS, you're missing this cover sheet, because that would have been discovered in a virtual meeting, much the same way it could have been discovered in an in-person meeting before COVID. So I don't know if there's any kind of collaboration that could go on that way, but I think it might be helpful, and I think it might reduce the time delays that we're hearing about anecdotally.
I think, this is Kelly Krenitz again. I think that's, you know, intake comes in through inspections and permits, so I think that would definitely need to be a conversation with them. I'm not sure that they have the technology. You know, right now, our computers don't have camera and, you know, audio, so, you know, those of us that are on today are using iPads and those types of things. So there would be some equipment that would need to be added, but that's, you know, a conversation that could be had with the Permit Center, whether something could be done that way. I mean, we certainly do it if people call ahead and ask. They're filling out the application and say, I don't understand, or can you go over? We're doing a lot of that these days through Planning and Zoning. We used to have Planner of the Days, but we're doing a lot of that virtually. But it's a conversation that could be had with IMP.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So this is a question for clarification. So there are a few areas that it says that if the site development plan is voided, then too, does the sketch plan and preliminary plan become void? Am I reading that correctly?
Ms. Bray, I believe you're correct.
Kinley Bray, Office of Law. Yes, you are reading that correct. And the reason for this change is not really necessarily a policy change, as opposed to a few outline projects, I think, that Mr. Kai Ziegler mentioned earlier, where there have been outstanding, underlying approvals that had, for various reasons, not come to fruition, and a developer brought back six, eight, ten, twelve years later, trying to rely on a prior sketch or preliminary plan approval.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I do understand those circumstances. I wonder, though, if this would have unintended consequences for folks outside of those particular circumstances, if it would create a kind of starting-over effect that wasn't intended on on every situation.
Kenley Bray from Office of Law. I would defer to the staff of the Office of Planning and Zoning on this particular question as to, particularly as to how often this happens. I think that at least from the questions that the Office of Law feels as to where there has been this massive gap in time, they're very clear questions. They're, if not the majority of applications that are coming in.
This is Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer. Kenley's absolutely correct. This does not happen frequently. This is actually pretty rare. And it's often a situation, and Kenley's also right, where someone is trying to resurrect a project that is years old, that where we have gone through significant amendments to the code, where the project is not reviewable unless it really is resubmitted from scratch. So I'd say it's not a common feature in what we live with. I've probably had, in my year and a half here, one or two. Not many.
Thank you.
Do we have any other, oh, Ms. Schuet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Linda Schuet, Legislative Attorney for the County Council. I noticed that you are taking out of the law that long, long list of stuff that's supposed to be, for example, in a site development plan, and, and instead really using the checklist instead of that long list, and I'm all in favor of that, making the code shorter. But I question whether you did that everywhere, and whether you didn't do it everywhere for, you know, some reason. Like, I don't think, I don't think other parts, like the sketch or the final plans are doing the same thing. Am I wrong about that?
Kenley Bray, Office of Law. No, you're not wrong about that. With respect to why the, there, we've taken out in certain places and others, I think we need to defer to the Office of Planning and Zoning.
I'm sorry. I missed what you said in the end?
You're not, you're not incorrect. It is proposed in two cases and not in others, but I would defer to the Office of Planning and Zoning as to the specifics as to whether we are comfortable making those changes to conform, or if it was separated for a reason.
Steve Kai Ziegler, Ms. Schuet, you may have brought up a good point. I don't see any reason that we should be inconsistent in how we do this throughout the code.
Because, Madam Chair.
I'm agreeing with you.
Go ahead, Ms. Schuet.
I love that. But thank you, Madam Chair. Linda Schuet, Legislative Attorney for the County Council. The checklists also are applicable to sketch and final plans, right? You have checklist for those. So, okay. I have a follow-up question, if I may, Madam Chair.
Of course. This is a work session, so y'all can kind of talk.
Okay. I noticed that, at least in some places, perhaps all, I'm not sure, you're deleting the comment review committee meeting, which, and maybe the answer to this is in the legislative summary, which I admit to not having fully taken in yet, but that provision, as I recall, was added in to give developers, if they wanted it, a chance to sit around a table with, which we can't do right now, but to sit around to talk to all of the people who are making comments, and especially when those comments seem like they don't always jive, that you could get those things resolved by a comment review meeting. And so my question is, why that's coming out?
Steve Kai Ziegler, I'm going to ask Lori and Kelly to respond to that, please.
This is Lori Allen, Planning and Zoning. I, I would be to creating this bill, but my guess as to why that has been taken out is because in my time here, I've only had one request, and I am not sure that anybody else has had a request for those types of meetings. Nobody's asked for it, and I think that's been for at least a couple of years. And normally, what we do is that we do work with the developers, and when we work with the consultants individually, and we perform this function without doing it formally via what is, what is in the law. But those are my interpretations of why that was taken out.
So, so this is Allison Pickard, Chair, D2. So just to clarify, so the comment review meetings that are currently mentioned or in the code, they happen in different ways throughout the process, but you're removing them because it's not necessarily something that needs to be codified. It's a practice that happens throughout with individual projects?
So Steve Kai Ziegler, Planning and Zoning Officer, Ms. Pickard, you're absolutely correct. There's a provision in the code that developers can access and use if they so choose. Our experience has been that over the last several years, they haven't used that format. That being said, there are multiple ways that a development interest who might be agreed has the ability to interact with us, and they do on a daily basis. Depending on the issues, we put a variety of our staff on a Zoom call or in a room when we were still meeting in person. We may invite members of the Office of Law or other departments, but it's a regular occurrence, probably 25% of all the meetings I'm involved in are with a development interest who has an issue. So it's a major factor of what we do. It's just the provision in the code really wasn't being activated by those who would use it. So you're right.
Ms. Schuet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that when this was added in, it was added in because developers didn't feel that they could have had the opportunity to put everybody in the same room and get things resolved all at the same time, as opposed to doing it either one by one by one, or getting some together but not all. So to me, this was, this is and was intended when it was adopted to be a safeguard to allow developers to ask for that. And the fact that it hasn't been used all that often, I'm not so sure, is a great idea for eliminating that right on the part of the people dealing with planning and zoning. But thank you very much for your responses.
Do we have any other questions or comments regarding 8620? Okay. Let's move along to 8920. This is a county executive bill as well. Ms. Fiedler is also a co-sponsor. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Schultz from the County Execs Office, from Animal Care and Control, Captain Adams, and Ms. Robin Catlett should be joining us as well from Law, Mr. Ritter. So 8920, first, let me thank Councilwoman Fiedler for her co-sponsorship. A lot of work has gone into this, into 8920. The Animal Care and Control bill is, it's a pretty long bill, and it does a number of important things. It's the duty of the animal care and control to serve and protect both people and animals in our community. As I mentioned, 8920 is the result of a lot of work by our animal care and control professionals, the Office of Law, and the dedicated advocates for animal welfare. This legislation is in line with the direction that modern animal enforcement is heading in the United States. The bill changes the section's name from animal control to animal care and control, which is more in line with, with our goals, priorities, and functions. It changes the name of the current Animal Control Commission, which is a panel of members to the Animal Matters Commission to clarify the distinction and make it more in line with the commission's functions. This provides animal care and control with the ability to hold persons who fail to properly care for their animals responsible, protecting both people and animals in the community. This is accomplished by a couple of ways. We're creating a hierarchical fee structure for the impoundment of an animal with higher impoundment fees for subsequent impoundments, giving animal care and control the ability to label owners reckless and prevent them from continuing to be reckless owners by allowing animal care and control to legally remove their animals after being found guilty. There is due process provisions of violating Article 12 of the county code more than three times in 24 months, giving animal care and control the ability to require owners to microchip their pets if they are impounded and impounded, I think, twice within 24 months. The owner has been found guilty of violating section of Article 12, giving animal care and control the ability to require owners to spay and neuter their pets if the pet is impounded two or more times in a 12-month period, affords the agency 14 days to hold an animal impounded under violations of the Public Safety Section or completion of an investigation, whichever is lesser, to ensure the agency can comply with the requirements to consider all pertinent information for the case while protecting the public. It adds a civil option into the code for founded animal cruelty cases that do not rise to the level of criminal charges, and adds a civil process for an owner to be charged with animal cruelty under 10-601 of the State Criminal Code, so the owner can petition for return of their animals, and the cost of the care would be the responsibility of the owner during the process. This is similar to many other jurisdictions in the state. With that, the administration is happy to answer any questions on this bill. It is a large one, and I'm glad we have our experts from Animal Care and Control and Office of Law to help answer any that you may have. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the panel? Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just wanted to add that after reading this, or actually, I had reached out to the administration after touring Animal Care and Control and hearing some of the stories of the pets that they had on premise. And after reading the bill and going back and forth with the administration, I did sign on. I think that this is really meant to target the most extreme and egregious situations where animals in our county are being treated inhumanely or at risk for losing their lives. So I was happy to sign on and happy to answer any questions as well.
Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. I'm curious about the microchipping provision. I want to know what exactly is the purpose for that. I understand a lot of the bill and what you're trying to do, but I'm not clear on exactly what microchipping is going to do with respect to folks who are committing acts of abuse or neglect against their animals, how the microchipping helps with that. So if you can help me understand that nexus, that would be helpful.
I'm going to ask our experts from Animal Care and Control.
Sure. Robin Catlett from Animal Care and Control here. So the microchipping is more so for our repeat offenders or our owners that are reckless as opposed to for those folks that have been intentionally or neglectfully cruel to their animals. It's to allow us to be able to get the information for the pet sooner rather than later, identify the pet faster, and better track the process, also assist with tracking of rabies information as well as other things. So it's more so for those owners. We have those animals that come in here all the time, and we go, oh, I recognize that dog, but it doesn't have a chip, so instead of being able to scan it and know who it is, we're using our extra brain power to try and remember, who was that dog? What was its last name when it was here, so I can figure it out? And so this will help speed the process for the animals as well as for the owners.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Nathan Volkey, District Three again. So I get that. When we're talking about the repeat offenders, it's talking about if within the 24 months prior, the person was found guilty, it looks like on one instance, right? So if you have one instance, and then within the next two years, you have a second instance, at that point, now you're classified as a repeat offender, and your dog is being, or your cat or whatever, is being microchipped. Is that right?
Yes, it would give us the opportunity to do that. We certainly, at this point, and have always encouraged people on the first offense to get a microchip. We'd rather be able to reclaim the animals in the field rather than have to bring them into the shelter, take them in and take all of that time to process them all the way through. And the microchips allow us to even now reclaim those animals on the road before having them come in. Better for the owners as well as better for the animal by reducing stress, and in fact, it also saves the owners money in the long run.
And just, I guess, maybe I'm not familiar enough with that piece of it. How does it do that? How does it save them the money? How are you sort of getting that information in the field so that you're not having to bring them in? Like, how does all that work so that this ultimately results in a better outcome for them? Sorry, Nathan Volkey, District Three again.
Yeah, sorry. Robin Catlett, Animal Care and Control. Not used to having to re-identify each time, so thanks for the reminder there. So all of our Animal Care and Control officers are equipped with microchip scanners. The microchip is a non-active chip, so it's not emitting any signals or anything like that in the animal when the animal's just wandering around. But when an officer picks up the animal, each of them has the ability to scan the animal in the field. That gives them an identification number. They can then call the microchip company. There are numerous microchip companies that work, but each microchip company tends to have a pattern in their numbering, number of digits or letters involved, that kind of thing. So we're very familiar with that, and there are online resources for us to go ahead and try and look up the chip and find out where it was last updated, so we can call, get the owner's information, and contact them right in the field. Our Animal Care and Control officers just this year were issued cell phones. So they now have cell phones in the field so that they can not only scan them, call the company themselves, and call the owner themselves, or go to the address themselves. That really speeds the process, so that then we're not, they're not, because they don't have the information, having to bring the animal back here, setting it up in a cage where it'll stay until it's checked in, whether it's that day or the next day, vaccinate it if we don't have the information to keep our population here healthy, which costs the county money, and of course, staff time. And then we have to post the animal on our website. We have the owner come in to reclaim the animal. It costs them whatever the impound fee is. Currently, it's the $25 no matter what, but this bill, as was discussed, has now the hierarchical system. So if it has those things, hopefully, we can beat them to this process and minimize the cost for them as owners. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Nathan Volkey, thank you again. And I knew you would have that information because I've seen your spreadsheets. So I know you have it. The final question I have on microchips, and then I'll be done, is so with these situations, what does it cost for the microchipping? So if somebody comes, has their animal, and they are brought to the facility, and they're now microchipped, what is the cost going to be to that person to have the microchipping done? And is there any kind of ongoing cost, or is it a one-time cost only?
So when an owner is getting a microchip as part of a redemption, the cost to the owner is $40. First level of citation is $50, so it actually is cheaper than a first level of citation. And right now, we even offer as an option, we'll void your first citation if you choose the microchip. Again, we're really trying to encourage that so that we can help minimize the number of animals in the shelter. We do also offer it to the public during our regular rabies clinics. So we have rabies and microchip clinics. I'm sorry, Robin Catlett for Animal Care and Control again. We do offer it with our clinics that we're doing currently twice a month for $20 for the public, so they can even get it done sooner and save money by doing it that way in advance. Again, we're really trying to encourage the responsible ownership. So if you're proving to be a responsible owner, you're going to have the option to do these things earlier and for less money. And in terms of additional costs, so we always want everyone to register their chips. We will keep the microchip information here in our system because frankly, a lot of people don't go through the registration process. Currently, with the company that we use, there's a $20 lifetime registration fee. However, there are companies that you can use that are free. However, there are companies that you can use that are free. For example, foundanimals.org. You can go there with a chip that's not from their company. Go on their website, register the chip. It costs you nothing. And then when we do that data search in the national database and look for it, it'll tell us the information was last updated with that company, so we know that's who to call. So you can get away with no additional cost or if you want it to be with the company that our chips are currently from, which could change at any time because we're, you know, always looking for, are we doing it the best way? Are we getting the best deal for the chips, et cetera? You know, is that the company? So right now, it's that twenty dollars for the lifetime.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions regarding eighty-nine, twenty? Okay, thanks, everybody, for being here this morning. This is a good bill. It's a good policy for the county. Let's move on to Bill ninety dash twenty. This is also a county executive bill with the co-sponsor, Ms. Lacy. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me, Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from Office of Planning and Zoning is Ms. Lynn Miller. And from Office of Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. I want to thank Councilwoman Lacy for her support of this bill. The bill is pretty, it's a pretty simple bill. It defines the use of data storage center for the purposes of the zoning ordinance and allows data storage centers as a permitted use in the industrial and employment mixed-use zoning districts. It allows data storage centers as a conditional use in the C-two and C-three districts only if located within the BWI Fort Meade growth area and establishes the conditional use requirements as relates to lot size setbacks, outside storage, other parameters. As many of you know, data storage is a, say, a rising need in the area. We're in our county is uniquely located and we've had some inquiries of an interest in placing some data storage centers in the county. And this bill does what I think is important, which is have it exist in our code with the definition. So we hope the council will pass this bill and are happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions about ninety dash twenty? You guys must have drafted this one really well. All right, well, let's move along to Bill ninety-one dash twenty. This is also a county executive bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me from Office of Budget is Ms. Moulden. And from Office of Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. Bill ninety-one twenty is the Snug Harbor SCBD. Snug Harbor contacted the Budget Office in May of twenty nineteen to begin the process of modifying the purposes of the Snug Harbor SCBD. More specifically, the community asked to add language related to dredging the community marina. The new purpose would be dredging to maintain access to and use of the community marina, including dredging from the Chesapeake Bay into the community marina and dredging in the community marina. After reviewing the submitted petitions, it was determined that fifty-four percent, fifty-four point five-five percent to be accurate, properties are in favor of the modification of the purpose. This meets the majority required by four dash seven dash two oh three. With that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions about Bill ninety-one dash twenty? Okay. Seeing none, we will move along to Bill ninety-two dash twenty. Also a county executive bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pete Barron, again, for the administration keeping the same team at the table from Budget, Ms. Moulden, and from Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. This is another SCBD bill. North Beach Park SCBD received budget guidance in October twenty nineteen pertaining to submitting a budget request for FY twenty-one. The community submitted a budget request that did not appropriate any funds for FY twenty-one. Despite the community reporting, it held funds of a little over seventeen thousand dollars. The community was then advised by the Budget Office that in order to use the funds already held by the community, the community must appropriate those funds. The community did not submit a corrected budget request to the appropriate funds to be included in legislation for FY twenty-one. In September twenty twenty, the newly appointed North Beach Park SCBD treasurer requested to revise their budget request to correct this error and provide for the appropriation of funds in the amount of, it says eighteen thousand, I'm thinking that might be a typo, for FY twenty-one. These funds are needed to repave a, regrade and repave a community parking lot and provide other community, and provide for other community expenses. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions about ninety-two twenty? Okay. We will move along to Bill ninety-three dash twenty. Ms. Lacy, this is your bill. Welcome back.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
We can.
Oh, very good. I apologize earlier. I had conflicting multiple meetings going on. One of them was preventing me from speaking in this meeting, so those are all done. So I apologize. Bill ninety-three twenty is a bill limited to defining a term, which is of course, one of the things legislators love to do, define terms. So I think it is pretty self-explanatory and I believe all my colleagues are familiar with the background of the bill arising out of the advisory opinion issued by our Ethics Commission at the end of August. That, that opinion, the entire council requested that the Ethics Commission would reconsider its position in that opinion. The Ethics Commission agreed to reconsider but did not ultimately change their viewpoint on on their advice. And my concern is that the, as the advisory opinion reads and in subsequent communications that were had between our Legislative Council and the Ethics Commission, the opinion extends so broadly that it essentially cuts out the ability of a council member to do most of the type of work and representation of our advocacy for our constituents that our constituents actually expect is just part of the job. It's what everyone, the layperson understands to be part of the job. To, they expect to be able to call their council member, have that council member inquire of an office, whether it's the Office of Planning and Zoning or Department of Public Works or some other department, Department of Finance, and to mention the specific details of that constituent's, you know, case or problem or issue in order to gain an understanding and further insight into whatever that is. And because the advisory opinion leaned heavily on the issue that our county code does not specifically define the phrase of usual and customary constituent services. That then, without that definition, our Ethics Commission was going to read very broadly this prohibition against council members being specifically advocates for their constituents in a way that they believe can't be done fairly because we can't possibly represent every constituent in the same way. I think that is just, it's just a misunderstanding really between what we functionally do when we represent or advocate for a constituent. It's not an attorney-client relationship. It is not a paid lobbyist type of relationship. It is what we do that we are already compensated for in representing the people we were elected to represent, everybody in our districts. And so there shouldn't be any artificial barriers like, you know, someone from another, a council member from another district needs to find another council member to go ask those specific questions. So there isn't an appearance of a conflict of interest. And, you know, any others of those kinds of examples. So hopefully, this definition would make it very, make it very clear. We can all be on the same page. And I hope you all will support the bill. Happy to try to answer any questions anyone might have.
Do we have any questions regarding ninety-three dash twenty? Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Volkey, District Three. Mr. Botzares, I see you're on the panel, so I'm curious what you think from the Ethics Commission's standpoint on this bill, if you could weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Volkey. Michael Botzares, Executive Director, Ethics Commission. Our commission first had a chance to review this definition proposed in Ethics Bill ninety-three twenty back in early October when Ms. Schuit sent it to our attention for comment. At that time, the entire Ethics Commission reviewed and commented on the proposed definition. And they asked me to draft a letter on their behalf summarizing their thoughts and expressing their disapproval of the bill. I did do that. I sent the copy of the letter to Ms. Schuit, a copy to the council and a copy to the county executive on October the ninth. Hopefully, everyone on the council has had an opportunity to review that letter. And if not, I'm happy to provide it after the meeting today. Just to summarize the, the, the letter. Ms. Lacy, I appreciate your attempt to try to resolve this issue of constituent services, but it's not one easily resolved and it's one that's very ripe for abuse, impropriety and misconduct. And I think that's the reason why the State Ethics Commission nor any other county ethics code has attempted to define what usual and customary constituent services is. You say that, you said that in layperson's eyes, they don't understand what you do. Well, I think they do understand what you do. And the Ethics Commission is made up of seven people of your community who are laypeople who make the determination what is usual and customary constituent services. And I agree that is a moving target, sometimes often hard to hit. But it's a target that needs to be constantly pursued for good reason. And when you try to put a specific and, in our opinion, very broad and capricious definition on that term, you're just taking away a major oversight function of the Ethics Commission that would completely nullify and usurp the commission's role as given to it under the Ethics Code. The commission has for many years given advice and guidance on this concept of usual and customary constituent services. It has to be done on a case-by-case basis. You have to look at all of the facts, all of the circumstances surrounding what sort of service is being asked for and what sort of service is being offered and whether that service is, would tend to give the appearance of impropriety or the appearance of some sort of undue influence. And that's what the entire Ethics Code is about. Our Ethics Code has two sections that mention constituent services. And that is Section seven five one oh four, which deals with representation, representing other folks in front of the county where the county has an interest. And then seven five one oh seven, which is the Prestige of Office section, that basically says that an employee cannot use the prestige of their office or their title for the benefit of another person. And it's a very broad provision. It does require a lot of analysis and a lot of opinion in order to give some sort of finite answers to questions that we receive. But they're important questions that need to be looked at broadly. This bill, in our opinion, is drafted. We permit a member of the county council to act as an advocate or an attorney for any citizen concerning most any matter before any county agency or even a quasi-judicial decision-making county agency. The bill doesn't require the communications to be on the record or conducted in a public forum. It doesn't require, it doesn't prohibit private communication or closed-door meetings with decision-makers. It does attempt to prohibit reprisal or favoritism, but who's going to monitor that? And who's going to report that? Anytime a council member interacts with an administrative employee, there's the potential for an implied threat or an implied reprisal or implied favoritism. And that's something that the commission must consider when it gives an opinion as to usual and customary constituent services. The proposed definition uses the word advocacy for a private citizen, for their personal and financial benefit. Without question as to why that is being requested or who is requesting it. Is that person a large donor? Are they a developer? Are they a lobbyist? Are they a family member? All of those would be covered under this new proposed definition of constituent services. It's something that I don't think was the intention of the original directors of the Ethics Code. All these separate factors go into the decision-making process when, like I said, seven members of our Community Ethics Commission are asked to give an opinion or advice concerning constituent services. And I think you can see in our opinions, most recently, the last several opinions, where we've tried to give as much deference as possible to, to the individual council member in making their own decisions on what is a constituent matter that's worth pursuing or is they're entitled to pursue. But you can't, you can't legislate such a broad definition that would take out the commission's insight and oversight into many of the questions or complaints that we receive. And in closing, before I have to answer any questions, I just want to, I want to read two things. One, in concluding that letter, the commission was very firm that they felt that by legislating such an overly broad definition, that the council was taking the Ethics Commission and the case-by-case smell test out of the equation and giving themselves a reason and an opportunity not to question their decisions or seek further advice. And it is the commission's opinion that that's not good ethics policy, nor is the intention of the Ethics Code, in our opinion. And I do want to mention one other thing. And when I spoke to Ms. Schuit about this, she said it was based, much of this definition was based on a DC Code of Ethics provision that tried to define usual and customary constituent services. And I don't want to get into the technical details of why the DC Code of Ethics is substantially different than our Code of Ethics. But I do want to address several opinions that were given after that definition was introduced by the DC Council. That definition was introduced by the DC Council after they too were unhappy with a particular Ethics Commission decision. And in order to override that decision, sort of similar to what being done by this legislation, they drafted the definition, which is almost word-for-word the same as the definition that's been drafted in Bill ninety-three dash twenty. But in doing so, it came under much criticism. And it was criticized as a bad law by at least two of the DC Council members. It was characterized as bad law by the editorial board of the Washington Post. And it was characterized as bad law by Robert Welshler, who is the Director of Research at City Ethics, which is a nonprofit organization that provides information and resources for local city and county ethics programs. And without getting into specific statements by any, each of those folks, I do want to read one quote from Mr. Wesler, who was the Director of Research at City Ethics. And he said in an article in that publication, after seeing the DC opinion, that he could not disagree with this definition more. First of all, it was very broad, both in the broad list of activities and in the narrow exceptions it provides. Most notable is the language of the exceptions. The verbs used subtly refer to communication, not to the character or substance of the activities. This means that any activity whatsoever is acceptable as long as the official says nothing unacceptable. Since it's hard to provide undeniable evidence of what an official has said, unless it's in writing or physically or digitally provided, constituent services under this definition would include any activity where an official was not stupid enough to put the threats, promises or requests in writing. So that was just the opinion of Mr. Welshler, a Director of Research at City Ethics. And I think And I think it expresses the opinion of our commission, which feels that this would be a bad law. Not that attempting to define constituent service is a bad idea, but this particular definition and words placed is a bad idea. By placing it in the definition section of the Ethics Code, you're applying it both to the Representation section of our code, as well as to the Prestige of Office section of our code. And if you apply that definition to the Representation section, you pretty much rewrite the Representation section to exclude it completely. You'll, you would allow representation for most anything. Leaving it in the Prestige of Office section, there's at least some way for the commission to have some discretion input. But again, not very much. So we, we would just ask, and the other issue is whether or not it's consistent with state law. As everyone knows, our county Ethics Code has to be substantially similar to the state Ethics Code. And we believe, the commission believes, that it would not be substantially similar with this definition made part of the code. And I know the commission's, the state Ethics Commission is going to consider this, assuming that it's, well, it's already been introduced. So we are going to request that the State Ethics Commission review the definition contained in ninety-three twenty. We're going to recommend that they disapprove it for a lot of the reasons that are in that letter about October ninth and for some additional reasons that we're going to include after doing some further research, such as the research on the D.C. Code of Ethics and the problems that they've had with that definition. So for that reason, the Ethics Commission is against the bill. But more than happy to work with the commission to try to work, I mean, with the council to try to work on further opinions that define usual and customary constituent services that may be more favorable. But again, we've got seven citizens who are citizens of this community who are defining what they believe is usual and customary community service, constituent service. And I believe that's the way the Ethics Law was designed to work. So if you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to discuss them.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to follow up really quick on those, a couple of those points as the sponsor of the bill. One is I, I certainly meant no disrespect to the seven members of the Ethics Commission as being laypeople who have their own understanding of what are usual and customary constituent services. And I would offer that the seven of us are laypeople who happen to be elected to this job. The difference is that we're providing usual and customary constituent services. And therefore, our opinion comes from a different perspective, which goes to my second point, which is, I don't think we can have a functional, healthy relationship between the county council and its members and the Ethics Commission and its members if we're starting from the viewpoint that every interaction could be rife with impropriety. Every interaction is, you know, somehow likely to lead to the appearance of impropriety or actual impropriety. And therefore, if we have that view, we are injecting distrust into all of our public interactions and public discourse. Instead, we should start from the position, which we even take in our normal personal relationships, which is one of trust, until proven otherwise. Trust, but verify. And I think every council member who is doing his or her job will be keeping some sort of notes or records. There will be communications proving what kinds of meetings, phone calls, emails that they've had, whether it's with a business or a resident or with a department head or a, anyone working with an agency, that there's enough to construct and show whether or not a particular interaction was above board or not. But I do think also, more importantly, the people expect our government to function. And that means that we all have to be, assuming that we're trying to all work above board. And if you get some information otherwise, then I think the Ethics Commission can, can handle it. But a definition is just a predetermined agreement of, of boundaries. And I think in this case, with this particular scope of what the Ethics Commission is concerned about, a boundary would actually be really helpful, especially because the Ethics Commission pointed out in your, your letters that you don't expect to become involved in a case-by-case analysis and determination of what a council member can and can't do. And that's just not going to be acceptable for, as a working relationship for us to get things done for our constituents. Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. Mr. Botzares, I have a couple of questions based on some things that you said. And, and maybe it's a little bit of pushback. So I'm going to just, I have three of them. I'm just going to ask all three. And if you have any, any feedback on them, I would appreciate it. The first one, you had mentioned this problem about representing a constituent before the county and how that might be an issue. And I know that we do have other code provisions that, that touch on that. I think that, that problem ought to be fixable in this bill, if that really is an issue with the interplay of those two provisions, where we simply specify either in this bill or in the other provision in law that, you know, usable and customary, sorry, usual and customary constituent services does not include, you know, representation before the county in a legal proceeding or Board of Appeals or something like that. I mean, I think we have language otherwise in, in the code already. But, but if that's not sufficient, I think, and my question is, can't we, can't we solve that problem with an amendment? The second question I have, and you spoke a little bit about how this really cuts the legs out of the Ethics Commission's ability to really evaluate the sort of undue influence. And at, at first glance, I think I disagree. And so I'm trying to understand exactly where that comes from. The bill does leave quite a bit of language and sort of, as long as there's no, you know, threaten of reprisal, promise of favoritism, we're not asking someone to abuse or exceed their discretion. These are all certainly things I think the Ethics Commission could still consider from an undue influence standpoint. So I'm trying to understand exactly what it is that the Ethics Commission feels they can't do if this bill passes, that, that they can currently do. And, and what exactly the language in this bill makes that a problem. And I guess then my third question, following up on that, is does the Ethics Commission have any suggestions for amendments that would bring this bill to a place where you're comfortable with it?
Thank you, Ms. Hare. Let me try to answer some of those questions for you. I want to start with the second one, because I'm reading the bill here on my screen. I, I think the problem is the language that's used. It says advocacy, communications, inquiry, and oversight. So it's allowing all of those things on behalf of any citizen of Anarondo County, by the council member or their designated. When you say that it's okay to advocate for somebody, advocacy is the very strong word, usually used in litigation or attorney representation. But you're advocating for one position and naturally against another position. That against other position very, very well may be the county position. So whether or not it's appropriate for a council member to advocate in such a situation is something that the Ethics Commission should have a hand in reviewing. Now, when you say that, that we can come up with an amendment or some sort of language that may be more protective, I think you're right. We probably can come up with some sort of language that may be more protective or give the Ethics Commission more insight. But our concern is that once this definition is put in place, then there won't be any additional inquiries by council members or, or anyone who has to deal with the definition of, of customary and usual constituent services. A council member will look at this definition, say, okay, wow, this is certainly advocacy. That's what I'm doing. No sense to inquire with the Ethics Commission whether it's appropriate or not. And then what's going to happen is we won't be dealing with informal opinions and advice by email or telephone call. We'll be dealing with complaints by citizens that are formal and written that the commission's going to have to deal with after the fact. And this commission has always taken the position that it would rather deal with these issues before they become complaints by citizens of the county, rather than after they become my complaint. Because once they become complaints that are official in writing, then the commission has to go through the hearing process. It has to go through the evidence accumulation process. It has to go through the inquiry process, all of which may have been avoided by a simple telephone call or conversation or email with maybe a different way to handle certain constituent service or maybe a recommendation not to do it. But if you get the recommendation that the commission doesn't see a problem, then any further complaint kind of becomes irrelevant, because the commission's already given its informal advice. And they're certainly not going to switch opinions if it comes to a complaint situation. So that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to stay in front of this, not get behind it. This definition is going to have us working from behind on almost every instance of a constituent services question.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I thought maybe I'd ask a follow-up then, because it sounds like it's not necessarily the language of the bill that the Ethics Commission is concerned about, but with council members' potential response or actions and our interpretation of it. And so here, here's my question. I don't think anyone disagrees that we advocate. If I go back to the, the setback bill for the chickens that I introduced and that was passed unanimously on the council, it came to me from one constituent. I then spoke to several departments about potentially changing the setbacks. I talked to the administration. I mean, this was all via, you know, email and phone calls and, and whatever it might be. It came before the council. We passed a bill. Certainly, I consider that advocacy. And I, I don't think anyone would say that goes beyond our scope of responsibilities. I think the key is that it's advocacy that goes so far as to threaten reprisal, promise favoritism, or ask someone to abuse or exceed their discretion, which is the problem. And that, to me, is captured in the bill. So I'm trying to understand why it is that the commission would be concerned about the word advocacy. I, I, I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'm missing it. I don't see it as a problematic word. I see it as usual and customary. It is something, I mean, anytime we introduce a piece of legislation, we're advocating for something. And, and so I'm trying to understand, the line to me is this undue influence. And I don't see how the commission is prohibited from making those determinations of undue influence or that the council would change our actions in requesting the Ethics Commission's, you know, advice in advance, just by virtue of this bill.
Okay, well, I see Mr. Nathan Bulkey raising his hand. Nathan, let me just answer this very quickly and then keep going. I, I do disagree with your analysis of, of advocacy. I think when you're trying to pass legislation, you're gaining or gathering information for the purpose of advocate, advocating for the entire community by passing legislation. This concerns advocacy of a particular individual citizen for their particular personal benefit. And that's the difference. And I'll refer to Mr. Bulkey if he has anything additional to say on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thanks.
I see Mr. Bulkey and Ms. Schuet. Mr. Bulkey, you have the floor at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan Bulkey, District Three. Mr. Botzares, thank you for that clarification. So I, I just want to be clear for anybody that's watching at home and trying to make sense of what in the world's going on here. This is a question that's largely about the GDP and land use and comprehensive rezoning and these types of issues, where when we could potentially be asked by a constituent to get involved in a situation where we're maybe meeting with Office of Planning and Zoning or we're trying to, you know, advance a constituent's particular interest, that's not necessarily the same as advancing the community's interests. And to me, that's a big difference. You know, I, I, I'll, I'll just say this on the record. This morning, I sent an email to Mr. Botzares for an ethics opinion on a request that I got from a constituent about weighing in. And I don't know the answer to whether I'm allowed or not. And so I asked the Ethics Commission, can I do it? And depending on the result of their response, which Mr. Botzares may know already, I don't know. But based on their response, I, I'll act accordingly. That, to me, is the appropriate way that we should be moving forward with these things. I, I go back, just, you know, I hate to do this, but I do it a lot, to the history of this county, right? We moved from a commissioner system of government to a charter system of government in nineteen-sixties. And one of the reasons for that, you know, we wanted home rule, absolutely, so that we had, you know, some autonomy from the state. But in addition, there was a high degree of, of what was at least perceived, if not actual corruption in this county. Part of the reason that we have the ethics laws that we do is because there has been a history of this type of almost insider dealing, if you will. I'll never forget being a kid growing up in this county and hearing lots of people say, it doesn't really matter what you know in this county, it matters who you know. And that, to me, has always been the mentality of Anarondo County to some degree. We want to change that. And I think that by doing this bill, we go backward. And what we do is we actually get more into a system like what we had previously, as opposed to a system where there is an outside Ethics Commission that's a check on us, basically as advocates for our constituents. I, I'm, I'm deeply concerned by this bill and where it puts us as a county. Because I, I just, I think, you know, I, I respect the concerns that the Vice Chair, my colleague Ms. Lacy, advanced, that we should have trust and that our interaction should be perceived as above board. But I also think that there does need to be a check on politicians, if you will. And that's what the Ethics Commission is attempting to do. And my concern with this bill is that takes a major check off of us. And that is not something that I'm going to be able to support, because I have significant concerns about that. So, you know, again, I just go back to the history of this county, what we've seen, things that have happened. There's a reason that we have the laws that we do. There's a reason that the Ethics Commission, which is four Democrats, three Republicans, unanimously came out and said this is a bad idea and we're against this. And I would expect that the State Ethics Commission is going to come in with something similar and say they're against it too. So to me, I, I would just urge my colleagues, this is, this is going to be, in my opinion, a step in the, in the wrong direction for us. But I'll leave it there. Thank you for the opportunity to make comments and, and to provide some insight.
Ms. Schuet. You're muted, hon.
Good morning, Still. Linda Schuet, Legislative Attorney for the County Council. It's my understanding from the advisory opinion that we received and a few emails that occurred afterwards that the following is true. You may not go to planning and zoning with your constituent and ask for more information about why the department is recommending X or Y or Z. You can go without your constituent, but you can't identify who your constituent is. So you can't give his name or her name. You can't give the address, which would identify who it is. So you have to dance around to try to get the information that you're trying to find. And I'm sure Mr. Botzares will correct me if I'm wrong. I don't view this opinion as being applicable only to planning and zoning or only to the land use map or the GDP. I, I think, for as long as I've been in and around county government, county council members have had a constituent call and say, hey, I'm having this really horrible problem with my water bill. I don't get what DPW was saying. And they would call up DPW and find out more information about why the water bill is what it is. And that's just one example. There are a million. And in my experience, that kind of help from a council member to a constituent has been done forever. And it's not limited to not bringing your constituent. It doesn't have all of the, the limitations. I, I basically think that the opinion, coupled with the following or the subsequent emails, eliminate your need to do, or eliminate your ability to do any constituent service without doing a, you know, asking a question of the Ethics Commission to see whether it's okay in this particular circumstance. And also, Michael, I'm happy to work with you on ways in which we could reach agreement on how to soften this or soften the ethics communion, ethics opinions that are out there or whatever. Thank you.
This is, Sarah, I'm going to get to you, but this is Alison Picker, Chair D2. I have a lot of concerns about the conversations that have been happening today. I appreciate very much the role that my legislative aide plays to the citizens of District Two every single day. And if we're supposed to ask the Ethics Commission if we can forward an email or about the way that Old Mill Road was repaved recently or, or a water bill, I, I just don't understand this, this, every piece of legislation that comes before this council, everything we'll do on that GDP is going to take a vote of four. As a council member, I really can't do anything by myself. I can reach out and help a constituent understand a situation or a process in the county by making a couple of phone calls or most likely my aides sending emails and helping each side understand what's happening. I don't find there's, sometimes I like those constituents. Most of the time I do. Sometimes I don't. So none of it is really some favor I'm doing to a friend. People reach out to me who don't know me. They've never seen my face. They just know that they type in, who's my council member? I need help with this problem. And they reach out to us. But when we define things in the code, which this council likes to do and does often, they're not in isolation. So we define, this bill is defining constituent, usual and customary constituent service. We have lots of other things, both in the Charter and this code, that define and outline our role as council. that define and outline our role as council. I cannot direct the county executive staff to do anything. I cannot direct a department head to do anything. I mean, I feel like we're going down a rabbit hole and we're just trying to make sure that what we do every single day is well-defined in the code. I don't need to call the Ethics Commission every time someone emails me about their unemployment claim that the state can't seem to figure out. We have a process of how we sort that out. So I'm just, I feel like this conversation is a bit much. I can't do anybody a favor because I need a vote of four. So that means four of us have to do an individual constituent a favor. We've all passed bills that affect a few people. And let me tell you, we like to say when it's, "Oh, well, it's countywide," but it, you know, but it's really only this. I can name a few bills we've had recently that have done that, that have helped an individual business or constituent. We've passed bills about it, but with a vote of four or more. Okay, I'm going to get off my soapbox and let Ms. Lacy speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sarah Lacy, District One. Well, first, I wanted to piggyback on the point you just made, which is we each represent our portion of the county. And for folks who, you know, when they go on the "Who is my council member?" page and it pulls me up, you know, they don't need to know me personally to get my assistance with whatever it is, whether that's their water and sewer bill, or a pothole, or unemployment assistance, or even, you know, "Hey, can we work on a bill to allow cottage food industries in the county?" You know, there's, there isn't favoritism there. And I firmly believe, given the interactions that I've seen over the past two years, that if any of my constituents felt that I treated them, you know, with impermissible favoritism in the sense of I said, "Nope, I'm not going to do that for you because, you know, because whatever reason that's not allowed." They know who to report it to in the county. And I don't think our residents are shy about letting people know when they think our government isn't functioning properly. Second point being that I didn't grow up here in Anarondo County, and I don't personally remember how the government has changed over the decades. But I can tell you, from my own personal experience, that Anarondo County is not the only county with a history of parochialism. And it's not the only county where, you know, who you know has been the critical difference in whether or not you get, you know, a permit, or, you know, whether you're in line to get the early information that allows you to, I don't know, buy a piece of property that's gone on a tax sale or something. I mean, any of those circumstances that you can imagine, they occur everywhere in this country. It's just, that is normal. So to me, the approach then becomes, if we have a common definition, even if it is the summarizing 27 years of ethics opinions, you know, whatever we put in code, there's that one place that you can go to, and it is our common starting point. And if we're looking at it from there, then I think the question is, what does the Ethics Commission need to do their jobs? What are the resources that you need to be able to, you know, tell me? If I have to ask you for review and permission for whatever it is that Nathan just said, for example, "Okay, well, can you promise me a response within 24 hours because this is very urgent?" Or, "Can you promise that you give everybody a certain, you know, response time?" Well, what would you need administratively to be able to manage that so that we know that it's fair and equal across all seven members and districts? I mean, I think there's a lot more thinking that could go into it from a management standpoint, if that's truly the problem. But first, we have to get past this idea of, are we generally acting in a way that has the most good for the most people in mind or not? Do you think we're generally acting unethically or criminally or something? Because let me tell you, I'm signing up for that misdemeanor, six months in jail, $1,000 fine, and kick me off the council. Okay, I bet every, every one of us has had an interaction with the administration that would be deemed potentially unethical under the advisory opinion. Not saying it rose to the level of the misdemeanor, six months in jail, $1,000 fine, but there would be an argument about it. If we have a definition, and I can say, "I know that my meeting came within that definition," then I am less worried that someone is going to essentially prosecute me for having come close to the line. And without this definition, I'm going to walk close to that line with the fear of prosecution. This is going to flip it the other way around so I can effectively do my job. That's my view.
Can I respond quickly, Ms. Picker?
Go ahead, Mr. Botsiris.
Thank you, Michael Botsiris, again, Executive Director. All these are good points. The Ethics Commission does not intend to usurp the constituent service function of a council member. That's a very important job of a council member. The question is usual and customary constituent services. And who's going to come up and make that decision? You have to allow some, some citizen group to decide when you've crossed the line of usual and customary constituent services. Because there are many ways to cross that line that would be violation of the Ethics Code and which the citizens of this community would not appreciate or approve. And by drafting such a broad definition that is not contained in the State Ethics Code, it's not contained in any other county ethics code, it's contained nowhere in Maryland that I could find. The only place we could find such, anything close was the DC Code, which was highly criticized at the time that it was put into place. So for 27 years, we've been able to work with this definition of usual and customary, allowing council members to make their own decisions when what they believe is usual and customary. And when they have a question, to come to the Commission and get their opinion on what's usual and customary. And we're not saying you have to come to the Commission. And by the way, I do think the Commission's very responsive to giving answers, normally within a day or two. If it's a simple email request, if you ask for a formal advisory opinion, then it's going to take a little longer. But I think this Commission's been very responsive in providing answers to council members or any other employee who's asked questions about ethics and the application of the law to their particular circumstances or behavior. But I think it's important that we not usurp the function or process or task of the Ethics Commission by inserting such a broad definition of usual and customary services would pretty much justify a council member from taking any position regarding any citizen involving any county agency. And some council members are going to deal with that more concertively, and some may take it much more liberally. And with this definition, it's just going to make it that much more difficult. And I think that's the reason why the State Ethics Code and why the County Ethics Code left it up to the Commission to make, to make that call and to assist in coming up with that definition. I also want to point out that when you talk about constituent services or coming up with an amendment or a definition, there's been, if you look at, and we did look at this, the U.S. Senate Ethics, Joint Ethics Commission, they have articles about constituent services. They can't come up with a definition. They have eight pages of what they believe is good constituent services and what they believe is bad constituent services. So if it takes them eight pages on a website to explain to a congressman or a senate member what they should be careful of and what they should look for, how can we do it in two paragraphs? I mean, two sentences? You can't. You've got to, you've got to do it by way of opinion, you've got to do it by way of interpretation. And you've got to have various opinions from Ethics Commission folks, from the citizens, from council members, and keep it all in balance. By doing this definition, you're, in our opinion, you're sending this particular issue out of balance. And I don't think that was the purpose or the intent of the Ethics Code. But I certainly appreciate your concerns, and I can see why they would be concerned when there's not a clear guideline in place to know when you're acting responsibly or when you're acting not responsibly. But I think most people would know when to ask the question, at least. Thank you.
Ms. Schuet, I'm going to let you, I'm going to let you make your comment, but we are beyond our time for our break, for our transcriptionist. So everyone else can hold that thought and we'll come back. But Ms. Schuet, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Linda Schuet, lawyer for the County Council. I just want to point out a few things. First of all, this bill addresses two things. One is constituent services for individuals. The other one is constituent services for businesses. And the business part of that and the language of that has already been approved by the State Ethics Commission. So we're really focusing on constituent services for individuals, not for business entities. It's also the, and so the first part is not based solely on the definition of DC, although that's where the language came from. But the State Ethics Commission, for example, in October of 2017, issued a document which addressed constituent services. And it said clearly, "An elected official is expected, as part of his/her job, to take positions in support of the official's constituents." Constituent service may include providing assistance to an individual constituent or doing other things. So, and there are other things in the legislative summary, there are other places where constituent services are discussed. And they, and everyone seems to recognize that it is the job of a council member to perform constituent services on behalf of individuals and to express judgments in their favor. And so, thank you.
At this time, Ms. Fiedler, we just need to take a break. We're way past our time. So everyone save their thoughts. This is an important conversation that we do need to wrap up when we come back. But we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we're going to come back at 10:55. But we're going to take a ten-minute break and we're going to come back at ten fifty-five. As it is now ten fifty-seven, I'm hoping everyone is back with us. Madam Secretary, are you with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to call the roll?
Yes, please. Okay. Uh, Mr. Volkey? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Volkey had to leave. Mr. Pruski?
Here.
Ms. Fiedler?
Present.
Ms. Rodvian is absent. Ms. Hare?
Present.
Ms. Lacy?
Present.
And Ms. Pickard?
Present.
Okay, Madam Chair, all are present except for Mr. Volkey and Ms. Rodvian.
Okay, great. We are still, uh, talking about Bill ninety-three twenty at this time. I think Ms. Fiedler, you were next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So, this, I believe, is a question for Mr. Botseris or maybe, um, Ms. Schuet. I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Vice Chair, but the basis for this bill came from the challenges that each individual council member has faced during the GDP process, understanding that this bill would apply to all constituent services. So, my question is that with regards to the GDP and the fact that we can't and we are prohibited from certain actions. Once the GDP gets to the county council as a piece of legislation, if I or any of my colleagues were to entertain introducing an amendment to any part of the GDP, could we then with our constituent meet with the Office, the Office of Planning and Zoning to work on an amendment, whether they support it or not?
Ms. Fiedler, Michael Botseris, are you talking about meeting with your constituent to gather information for the purposes of coming up with an amendment? Are you talking about meeting with your constituents for the purposes of advocating for their particular position and coming up with an amendment?
Well, I guess I would say that if, yes, meeting with the constituent for the purposes of an amendment and then the follow-up, if I were to entertain the drafting of an amendment and then sharing it with the Office of Planning and Zoning, uh, would that be prohibited in your opinion under the current, um, ruling?
No, I don't think so. And again, this is my opinion, not the commission's opinion, but I'm just, my sense of it. That if you're gathering information for legislation, I mean, that's your job as a legislator. As a county council person is to come up with legislation amendments, et cetera. And whatever you need to do to gather information for that purpose certainly would be far within usual and customary constituent services if you're contacting that constituent for the purposes of gathering information. I think where you cross the line is when you start advocating for a particular position or particular result under the current state of the law for a particular individual citizen. I think, you know, that's where you're going to get into problems crossing the line. But again, constituent services is not one of those things that can be defined in one or two sentences. There are pages, articles, and opinions written about it all the time. And you have to, uh, you know, you have to at least consider all these issues.
Understood. I guess I, I'm still, I'm still confused because if I introduce an amendment to any piece of legislation and then I work with my colleagues to get four votes, am I, is that not advocating?
That's legislating.
Okay, um, just a follow-up, a question or a new question, actually. Um, when, when you said that the council knows more than anyone what, what constitutes constituent services, is it also fair to say that that could differentiate between each district and what we handle in our own districts? And could that change from council body to council body?
Well, it can change from time to time. What is normal and usual custom or customary and usual constituent services obviously can change. Opinions can change over time. Uh, whether it can change between council districts, I don't think so. Um, whether it can change between counties, sure. That's why the Ethics Commission, the State Ethics Commission decided not to include a definition because each county is going to have, and each county ethics commissioner or county board or county commissioner is going to have a different opinion on what is a usual and customary constituent services. So, it's not an easy question to ask, to, to answer.
I appreciate that.
Be considered among Anaronda County, uh, with regard to that question.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Botseris, this is Allison Pickard, Chair D two. Uh, just to piggyback on what my colleague Ms. Fiedler just said. I, I sort of, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Amanda, but each of us are different people and we run our offices differently and we serve our constituents possibly a little bit differently. So, we may handle constituent service differently. Uh, I don't know if that's what she was getting at, but before your ethics opinion came down, uh, and whenever that was, I was very clear on what I could and could not do uh, as a council member and my legislative aide. Now with this new ethics opinion, I don't know that I can do many of the things that I have kept doing, um, based on your very strict opinion about constituent service that you say is too hard to define, but you define it anyways. I don't, I'm just at a loss. And the way I serve the, the constituents that come to me, um, is, is very clear in my mind. Um, and often the way I serve my constituents is having to tell them exactly what I cannot do. And here's what I can do. And it's a lot of education. But with your opinion before us that is now on the books, I don't know. You've, I feel like that opinion has made it, um, very unclear on what is constituent service. So, I think we need as a body to figure out a definition that everybody can agree to, um, in some way. Almost lots of our legislation starts as a concerned citizen bringing a problem to us. And that, sometimes we don't know it needs legislation to fix it. Sometimes the legis, the, the fix that the constituent want, I might not agree is a good solution. So, there's advocacy in all of that. We can spend a lot of time defining every single one of these words, but I know all seven of the colleagues currently serving understand their role and I think serve their constituents well. But I'm, I'm just more con- confused than I was before your ethics opinion came out. And I feel we do need a piece of legislation to define usual and customary constituent service. What's on paper right now, we might not be able to agree on and we might not be able to get the State Ethics Commission. Although, Ms. Schuet, I wanted to ask, didn't the town of Westminster have a very similar definition that passed muster with the state?
With respect to, this is Linda Schuet. Uh, with respect to, uh, constituent services on behalf of businesses, that part was approved. That's the second part of the bill.
Okay.
The bill comes from partly in, partly from the DC law on this and partly from statements from the State Ethics Commission and other sources that talk about how, um, elected officials can go before a governmental body and advocate or express judgments about, um, what's going on, whatever the situation may be.
Go ahead.
May I ask, Pickard?
Well, I want one last question, uh, Mr. Botseris, and I promise, despite the fact that I'm a lawyer, that I will only ask one question. And that is, um, in your view, Mr. Botseris, doesn't the opinion that was just issued coupled with the email advice mean that a council person cannot, um, go to DPW or with or without the constituent and say, my constituent is Ms. Smith. She lives at twenty Main Street. And I don't, I would like to gather more information about why her water bill is what it is. Doesn't the opinion prohibit that?
What opinion are we talking about? Everyone seems to be talking about the last opinion that became an issue. Which particular opinion and which particular language are we talking about? Because I think maybe if we just look at that opinion and look at that language and maybe clarify what the commission meant in that opinion, then maybe we could resolve a lot of these issues without having to try to find them in such an overly broad term. So, which opinion is Pickard and Schuet are you referring to?
Linda Schuet, again, it's, uh, the opinion that came out fairly recently. It's opinion, advisory opinion twenty dash thirty-six, which on its face only deals with going with a constituent to planning and zoning to talk about the GDP. But I think that that concept applies to going with your constituent to DPW to talk about a water bill. So, to me, I would like to hear whether you agree with that um, very slight jump from the existing opinion.
I think that's a pretty big jump, inquiring about a water bill, whether it's accurate or not, as opposed to requesting a change in the zoning or requesting a special exemption if that was going on here. So, I don't think they're equivalent at all. Um, but again, that, that will be a question for the commission to answer. I mean, I'm not going to answer it. It, it depends on a lot of the facts and circumstances. What exactly of a water bill are you talking about?
Okay, but just Linda Schuet again, just, just, I, I've got, oh, I'm going to ask more than one question, unfortunately. I think that when you go to meet with a department head about the GDP, you are in fact gathering information that relates to legislation. When you go to DPW to ask about a water bill, you're not, and you're not in the process of doing legislation. So, that seems to be, I, I just, I personally find it very confusing as to what is or is not meant. But like I said, Michael, I'm certainly willing to talk to you about ways that might be more efficient, assuming that the sponsor agrees, uh, just to have a conversation about this.
And I'm more than happy to go back to the commission and, and try to clarify whatever needs to be clarified to, to make it happen.
Thank you.
This is Allison Pickard, Chair D two. I still don't understand why a conversation with planning and zoning regarding a land use change with the GDP is somehow special or separate or different from any other constituent service we would provide. We, we can't change the GDP on our own. We can't make a land use change without an amendment with four votes. But we can support our constituents in understanding the process, in asking the questions, talking the county language to the layperson's questions, just like we do with every other department. So, why is it different? Why is, why has this process of the GDP, which is legislation, different from any other county department or county function that happens? That's what everybody is concerned about, Mr. Botseris. I just don't understand what's so special about this one department or this one, uh, which will be legislation, Plan twenty forty will be a bill come February or so. So, I don't understand what the difference is.
Well, I'm happy to take that question back to the commission, Ms. Pickard. I can tell you that Bill eighty, I mean, Opinion twenty thirty-six, I'm looking at it now. And one of the things that, 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 uh, reaches out to me is the sentence says that the only logical conclusion one can draw from the constituent requesting the presence of a council member at such a meeting is to influence the decision of OPC to secure a more favorable result for the constituent. Now, I don't know what the issue was in that case, what the reason why the constituent, I don't recall. I have to go back and look at the entire opinion, the entire file, uh, to find out what, and that's why I'm saying that it, it has to be ruled on a case-by-case basis because that can be relevant and that can be important.
I don't understand, but I'm going to let Ms. Lacy speak. Go ahead, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. Mr. Botseris, I think it's perfect that you just quoted that line because that line is actually what, to me, illustrates the problem. That line assumes, in what you just read, it assumes that the only possible purpose of this, of a meeting could be for the constituent to obtain the help of the council member in influencing the agency, um, which presumably sounds like it would be, it's assumed or implicit in that sentence that it's for an improper purpose. But even if it was for a proper purpose, whatever, the problem is the assumption that there's only one thing that can be accomplished. That comes at it from an assumption that the council member is not necessarily acting in good faith. And there are other things that council members can achieve for constituents without, um, crossing the ethical line, obviously. One of the, one of the reasons a constituent would be happy to have their council member with them in a meeting with an agency is to feel like they have someone they know is or they can feel to be on their side, representing their interests because they may feel intimidated by the agency. They may feel like prior attempts to work out some issue with an agency um, were unsuccessful because they felt an agency member blew them off. We can come up with lots of other potential factual scenarios, which is why this discussion isn't progressing any further. Because what I keep hearing from, from Mr. Botseris is all of these potential, um, events or issues or circumstances are so highly factually specific that I can't answer any questions without going back to the Ethics Commission. And on, on the other side of your mouth, what I'm hearing is we have been issuing opinions for twenty-seven years. We know what, we, the commission, we know what constituent services looks like or doesn't look like. And we have those of us on the council saying, yes, we do know that. We had a clear understanding until this opinion came out at the end of August. And so, we're having a big disagreement over what that opinion means. That's why the council asked for the commission to reconsider. The commission agreed to reconsider but changed nothing. That's the genesis for this bill because if I can get four votes agreeing to a definition, this problem is solved and we can move on.
Are there any questions or concerns? Discussion points for ninety-three twenty? All right, we will move along to, where's my list? Ninety-four twenty. Mr. Pruski, this is your bill. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, Councilman, District Four. Um, thank you all. Um, it's quite interesting how we're going from the last bill to this bill when we talk about trust. Um, and I want to open up and I want you to imagine something first. Imagine if you own a town home, a single-family home, and in the paper you read human trafficking, uh, naked couple walking around on PCP, um, drug deals, uh, prostitution on a regular basis, uh, stolen property, um, criminal law where somebody was either murdered or, um, obviously created, uh, chaos. Uh, and essentially all these are felonies. And notice I said to you, imagine, that's actually the reality of some of our residents in Anaronda County. And for some of them, they've been dealing it for twenty to twenty-five years. Um, and I think the biggest piece that folks need to understand is that, uh, we're all reasonable people and we're citizens. and we're citizens ourselves that serve on this council, is that there has to be some threshold of how we take care of our community and doing reasonable business. And so, understanding that the prior council, I did pass a bill, was vetoed by the prior county executive. And that bill was a little bit different. I did get feedback from some folks about concerns, and I do want to address those concerns in this current bill. In addition, I have some amendments that I've worked with some community groups on. But I want to be absolutely clear, those things that I mentioned earlier, I don't think any of you on this council would like to live in those conditions of the things that I said. And this happens on a daily basis. And I can certainly send over, I'll have my aide send this to you, but we're gonna send you a report to understand that when you have 350 police and EMS or fire calls to one location, that's a problem. That's a nuisance, in my opinion. And so how we define that policy is this bill. And so I have a great concern where we're using taxpayer dollars for folks to fund their private entities. And again, let me walk through the bill and then go over the amendments. Just bear with me. So first of all, a public nuisance is permitting, prohibiting a property from being a public nuisance, the enforcement of the following provisions. First of all, a public nuisance means any property where five or more, five or more occasions within a 38 period arrests, okay, have been made. And what, again, what are those crimes? So lewdness, prostitution, illegally administering controlled dangerous substances under the criminal state code, illegal storage or concealment of controlled dangerous substances, paraphernalia in quantity, illegal gambling, storage or possession of stolen property at $1,500 or more, again, felony. Crime of violence, okay, so when we're talking about somebody tries to stab someone or things like that. Offensive prohibited under the state code. Again, these are all high-end crimes. So let me separate, so we're clear here. This is not somebody stealing candy bar. This is not somebody arguing in a parking lot. This is not someone fraternity brothers get in a loud, roddy noise, whatever else. These are felonies. These are high-end crimes that, that would be classified under this, okay? And as far as the, the public nuisance itself, the process works like this. The police, and we work with them on this, and thank you to the Anaronda County Police Department, the Law Office, Ms. Kenny and several others. The police actually have data. They've been recording data for a while about arrests and includes misdemeanors, felonies, and so on. Included in that data, they can figure out if a particular property has a certain number of felonies listed. Now, some would ask, why wouldn't you choose police calls, fire EMS calls? Because they go up and down. Obviously, it's there. So obviously, you have to define why choose the number five. Well, first of all, that threshold only came in maybe once or twice with the properties that we're talking about. It's never happened, to my understanding from the data, at a gas station, at a retail establishment. These are mostly hotels where this crime is occurring. And again, for those of you that read the media, the most recent one was in Brooklyn Park on BNA Boulevard, where we had a situation of numerous arrests for human trafficking, which, which were listed. And this has been continuing problem. If you ask anybody in either the northern or western districts and even in eastern with Ms. Roddian, who did discuss this with her, that were folks there. So that, that's why the number five was chosen in working with the police, not 10, not three, obviously five in a 30-day instance, because it's still a pretty, pretty high threshold. But as far as the violation, what would happen is, the, the police would report that to the Office of Law, and the Office of Law has discretion. I, I want to make this absolutely clear. The Office of Law has discretion on whether to take it to court or not and obviously deal with proceedings. And if you look at the bottom part of the bill as far as the violation, Class A civil offenses are up to $10,000. So the Office of Law would obviously have to have a case and may, may, not shall, doesn't have to, not required, would go to court, obviously there are judicial proceedings, and people would have due process. I share that with you in walking through the bill, because this is not a closure of a place. This is really to deal with high-end crime and also allowing due process. In my communication with the Law Office, you know, and I've gotten a couple of these where folks have said, well, I own a grocery store and, you know, there were five felonies in my parking lot. I don't think the Office of Law or any judge in Anaronda County is going to take a case where it's not the property owner in terms of the security cameras, doing all the other things. In that case, of course, the Office of Law is here, they can speak to that. I think the threshold here in terms of what we're looking at is that the property owner is really doing absolutely nothing. And let me give you an example, because we did a walkthrough with some of the properties in my district. You have security cameras that are on property that have been broken, have not been repaired. You have crimes that continue to go on and the police are working extra shifts and putting extra resources. Nothing's been done. We have townhomes and communities that live next door to these properties where the crime has actually bled into the community, literally. And, and home values have been impacted, where essentially somebody who had a townhome, their, their value, their property has gone down. If you look at the area, if you look at Yelp and Google reviews, unfortunately, some of the other establishments have suffered. So if you're a gas station and you're next to one of these properties, imagine you're a solid business owner doing everything you can, and you have to obviously deal with the nuisances that are there. In addition, I, I want to state, as we've gone through, there are two, actually, I should say, two to three amendments that, that we're considering. The first one, which was brought up, is DODIS. So there was some concern, and I know Ms. Schewitt wrote a memo to the council about notification. We are working on an amendment that the property owner would be notified prior to any court proceeding. So say, for instance, they didn't know what was going on. I can tell you, and I don't know if any of you read the Capitol Gazette or the Baltimore Sun, but generally, if there's a felony, it's either on Anaronda First Alert or in the Capitol. They cover it. Why? Because people get concerned over that, right? And, and so obviously, there is public notice from that end, but we also felt to clarify that, that that would be a good idea. The second thing that, that we've talked to, and this is really apartment complexes, because they're defined as a larger property. If you had a resident who, you know, either committed a crime or has been involved with crime and you're concerned about them and they're in a lease or whatever else, if someone's going through the eviction process and trying to remove them from their property, I think that makes sense that they wouldn't be held to that. So we are working on an exemption that if the eviction process has been started for someone, that that would make sense, right? You wouldn't want to hold somebody who's trying to do the right thing. Again, I think there are people that don't read the intent of this law and don't understand that these are felonies. This threshold is very high. I also believe that some people will say, well, it's property owner rights, they can do whatever they want. Well, at what point do you define a public nuisance? How many, how many taxpayer dollars of police and fire EMS for someone knowingly, knowing that these things continue to go on, and for instance, maybe 15 years where this has happened? And I call it like whack-a-mole. So one year, you know, you'll have 400 calls, the next year you'll have 200 calls, right? Or there'll be a murder and human trafficking, then all of a sudden, things slow down, and guess what? The next year it's happening. So what we thought, again, is to start somewhere. Where do you have a legitimate piece where this would come forward? And that's why we looked at five high-end arrests in terms of felonies. And, and again, the due process piece is very important. The prior legislation had some of that, but this is very clear. The fact that it's a tool. It's not something that the Law Office, I think, will take lightly. And, and I'm sure also, having the judicial system in terms of Anaronda County involved, will limit. Anybody would have a concern. Again, we've had some folks reach out and say, well, you know, you know, there are people that, that come and we have one or two felonies, and I said, well, one or two felonies. Show me data. Nobody has shown me data besides the hotels. And if you have the data, please come forward, that this would impact, again, retail associations, other things. It's generally hotels, okay? But the mere fact that you have five felonies on your property in 30 days, that's still kind of high, right? Like, I, I still find that to be somewhat of a nuisance. And I know that there are some other council mag districts who have testified and shared with me that they have these similar concerns. And I think the real problem is, is that I tried to work with some of these folks. I've actually met with them, these property owners. I've met with them, I've offered tax breaks, I've offered ways on security ideas, I've given them information, and they're not changing. And so if you're a property owner next door to one of these places, what do you say? We just let it go, right? That they own their property, they can do whatever they want. There, there has to be a stand taken by the council, and certainly I'm asking you to look at this. If any of you'd like to visit too, I'd be happy to take you to these hotels. I, I suggest we go in the evening, so you can kind of see some of the behaviors that go on, because during the day, it looks like a wonderful place, right? But if you are interested in visiting any of these sites, I'd be happy. Just shoot me an email, we will set it up. I'll walk you through. I'll even have you meet the owners of the places that, that we're trying to target. But I'll kind of finish with this. Some people have asked, well, why don't you limit it to hotels? Why don't you limit it to retail, whatever else? The mere fact that we want to be consistent, okay? And I think the fact that you have five for a 30-day period, again, is still a high threshold. The fact that the Law Office has the ability where it's may and it's a tool, and then, of course, the, the due process with, with court. So I think this was well thought out. We reached out to a lot of community members. I've been discussing with the Maryland Hotel Association, Maryland Retailer Association, Chambers of Commerce, I mean, you name it. We've talked to folks and we certainly will look at any way. But I think there is a time where we have to put a flag in the sand and say, this is it. Because, you know, residents in that area don't want, and this is no offense to, to the prior administration, sending in helicopters and, you know, two police cars with a PR stunt is not going to do it anymore. No offense, I'm sorry. People have had enough. You know, we, we want to see some, some stance that reasonable legislation and, and not just, you know, to say, you know, put a cover over what's really happening. I think we need to take a stand. And so I'm certainly willing to work with anybody, have any suggestions, thoughts, but we have to start somewhere. So I, I'll finish there. I thank you all. I know I've spoken with many of you about this bill already in, in terms of where, why I'm doing it. And I'm happy, and I know you're gonna get testimony as we come for the public hearing from a lot of these association members that are certainly, you know, happy to do that. So thank you again for your time and else.
Thank you, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just have one question, and actually, it stemmed from something, Councilwoman Pruski, that you just said. We, we talked a little bit about this, the discretion, the notice. And you mentioned how it, it seems to be fairly clear when an owner knows what's going on and is choosing to ignore it and choosing not to do anything about it versus when they're working on eviction proceedings or when they're, you know, installing security cameras and things like that. Have you put any thought into, under Section B, on the prohibition of property? It says right now, a property owner may not allow a property to be a public nuisance. Have you thought about inserting the word knowingly in there? Because I think that might address some of the notice, some of the discretionary pieces, and really make it clear that if someone is taking steps to correct these issues, that they're not going to be prosecuted for it. But if they are kind of willfully turning a blind eye, they, then they'll be subject to it. So instead, it would just read, a property owner may not knowingly allow a property to be a public nuisance?
Again, I'm not an attorney and I only play one on TV, so I certainly let Ms. Schewitt kind of clarify that. I know the amendments, and I'm trying to pull them up here if I can, just to give everybody kind of a notice here, if I can. Just give me one second. So basically, what, what we've done as far as the attempt, when we talk about knowing, before court proceeding is initiated under the subsection, communication with the property owner about the law and providing suggestions on a prevent criminal activity on the property, number one. Number two, mail by certified letter to the property owner that desires or describes the crimes committed on the property within the 30-day period and request cooperation to, to avoid the need for court proceedings. So that kind of gets to your point, you know, from that end. Again, I don't know if that satisfies where you're coming from, but I, I get you. We want to make sure that the Law Office is communicating from that end. But I'll let Ms. Schewitt chime in again, but thank you, Ms. Hare.
Ms. Schewitt.
Linda Schewitt, lawyer for the county council. On the issue of knowledge, the, there's a sentence in B which says that the owner is subject to enforcement and fines regardless of whether the owner had any knowledge of the public nuisance. And that language was added in at the request of the Office of Law in terms of enforcement and thought to be a phrase that was needed for better enforcement mechanisms. So I just point that out, because we need to be clear on this one way or the other in terms of whether it's knowingly or whether it's with or without knowledge.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Sarah Lacy, District 1. So along those lines and playing lawyers on TV, at first I thought, oh, what Jessica's saying with knowingly makes sense. But then with what you just said, Linda, I, I guess it, it seems like the scheme that you're going for is a civil enforcement scheme. So knowingly wouldn't be the standard that would, would go in there, because knowingly would be, it would be implied that you're looking at, say, a criminal enforcement proceeding that the state's attorney's office is going to do versus a purely civil and administrative remedy or enforcement scheme, which doesn't depend so much on, on the, essentially, the mental state of the property owner. What knowledge did they have or not have? And you could satisfy that with an administrative notice that might be like, I don't know, seven days in advance of action being taken, something short. So you're not giving a long leash, because presumably, by the time the Office of Law has decided to take action against this particular public nuisance, enough time has already, you know, elapsed. So you could give that short notice and then you are going to, I guess, the circuit court probably for, for whatever remedies you're looking for. And so I guess that would be my comment. My question is, what do you think about maybe outlining some in more detail for the public to kind of understand the scenarios where you expect this, this bill would come into play and being more specific about the types of remedies that would be sought?
Mr. Pruski.
Trying to get off on you here. Councilman Pruski, District 4. Ms. Lacy, I'm certainly open to that amendment. Again, I had to start somewhere from where we had. I think the, the biggest piece that's a, a, a no discussion is, is the felony piece. I think those are high-end, you know, crimes. But as far as the process, procedure, and how we get there, absolutely. And when I did meet with some of the business owners and other things, you know, we've kind of gone through and they, many of them breathed me, the threshold is very high. You know, you generally don't have five felonies on that piece. And I, I don't know if the Law Office can explain, but again, my communication with them is that they would not proceed with court proceedings if, for instance, you know, five felonies were at a Home Depot and it was all in the parking lot and it wasn't the property owner, right? They had security cameras, they did everything they had. And again, how do you define that in a code, right? Knowingly versus not knowingly or whatever else, but if they could address that. And then the second piece, if there is language that you have, Ms. Lacy, I'm happy to, again, try and insert that. I think that, and I'll have my aide do this, send out the amendments, so you can kind of see where that, that notice piece is there. Because you're right, you don't want to have a situation where somebody does not know that this occurred, right? It happened in their parking lot, whatever. And, and we kind of clarified this too, that it has to happen on the property. So often, we have, you know, crimes and other things that occur outside, and then they move on, you know, to that property, whatever else. So that's, that's the other thing too, that, that it has to be on that property, because that's where we want to define kind of those areas and things like that. So again, happy to work with you, just let me know. But if the Law Office can maybe explain more in detail about when they may, you know, proceed with a case, what, what's their guidance and threshold and so on, that'd be helpful, I think, for the council. Thank you.
Sure, I can do that. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. The, when the Law Office gets a referral for this type of matter, we would review it just like we would with any other type of enforcement referral that we get from IMP or OPZ. You know, we would review the evidence that we would have to establish the case and determine whether it meets the threshold that's set forth in the law, you know, determine what our probability is of, of winning the case. So I agree with what Mr. Pruski has said, that we're gonna look at each of these on a case-by-case basis. I don't necessarily expect the police to send over something like the Home Depot example that you had given. You know, I think it's going to be the types of matters that they would refer to us will be the ones that are really creating a public nuisance in the neighborhood and surrounding areas. And, you know, then, of course, we would look at, make sure that the, the arrests meet the number, that they're the type of arrests that we're looking at, you know, and things of that nature to determine whether it's something that we would go forward on. And with, with regard to the knowingly discussion that's, that's occurred here, I think Ms. Schewitt is correct. I probably did suggest that language about the, regardless of the knowledge of the property owner, because generally, any violations that occur on real property are usually the responsible, responsibility of the property owners, regardless of whether or not they have notice of them or, you know, allow them or don't allow them to occur. But I think that the amendments that you're proposing are actually a good complement to that, because now we're going to be putting that property owner on notice that they have a nuisance. because now we're going to be putting that property owner on notice that they have a nuisance property. So if they didn't know before, they will know once they get that notice from the police. And then if that notice from the police department sets forth certain, you know, steps that they can take and actions that could help, you know, abate that violation. And then they, you know, they don't take that action, that's certainly going to help us in a case going forward to prove to the court that, look, you know, they've been put on notice that there are these issues on their property. They were instructed by the police to take, you know, these certain steps to take care of that and they haven't done that and, you know, it's still been an issue. So I think that that actually will help in the county's cases on these matters as well.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sarah Lacy, District One. I am generally supportive of the bill. I just would really be helped by thinking through some potential specific applications of the bill. I have a community in my district that has a light rail station where there are frequently reports of, you know, felony drug use, let's say. And who knows, whatever other, whatever it is, let's just say it meets the criteria, okay, for action. And there's also, next to that light rail property, there is a convenience store. And let's just say, you know, same sorts of things, activities are taking place there. And so from, if this bill were passed as it is, I'm trying to envision how there might be enforcement when, as to the light rail, that's not private property or it's not county property, I think. I think it's state property, so I don't think we could enforce anything on state property. And then as to, you know, the convenience store, I guess I'm trying to think of, well, what can you do? In part because in this specific situation, the two sort of have an amplification kind of relationship, you know, people getting off the light rail, they go to the convenience store, they go back to the light rail, and it's kind of a mess. So I'm thinking, okay, if I were to advise a constituent on how this bill might actually help in this area because they do want help with the kinds of nuisance and felony crimes that are going on there, it's just a question of how. Then I would say, well, I can't, once again, I can't, you know, really do anything about the light rail because the county can't. But as to the convenience store, what are the kinds of things that they could be ordered to do? Like hiring more security presence, installing more cameras, you know, paying money, I mean, and I'm not sure how that would help. But that's, those are the questions my constituents are going to be asking.
Mr. Pusky.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lacy. Andrew Pusky, District Four. So that's a very good question. And actually, when we did the walkthrough for the hotels in my area, the district commanders actually provide guidance to businesses all the time. So for instance, either security cameras, operation plans, recommended, you know, private security, off-duty police officers. Now, they can't obviously force anybody to do anything. But they frequently do that. They're reached out to by several businesses and agencies, the same, to ask for advice. So I can't speak because I know the police department, I don't think, has a representative here. But I do recall that after we did the walkthrough with Senator Bydl and others in my area and community leaders, they did provide some suggestions to the property owner to kind of abate what was occurring. And for instance, and again, I don't want to call it one business, but there was a security camera in the back of, next to the community that's been broken for about five years. And it's been recommended to be fixed now four times. So when we talk about, again, the willingness, you know, from that end, and that's why I think the law office and others will work with the police. Because when you go to court, you have to have due process and prove your case, right? You're innocent until proven guilty. So obviously, you know, when they bring their case, they would have to have those facts and decisions. And I would say the same for the property owner. What have you done, obviously, to address those issues? And I think that's why a judge, you know, would set, obviously, whatever the abatement is from that end. So I don't think there's any specific formula for each property, but there is advice that is provided by our police department. Again, I know they're not here, but I'm sure they could testify at the public hearing or get that information. But I do recall them sharing that they do that on a frequent basis.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilman Pusky, actually, Major Goodwin is here. She is audio only. So we do have somebody from police who might be able to speak to some points.
We can take him from Miss Goodwin to chime in. Major Goodwin?
Yes, I just think I got unmuted. Can everyone hear me?
You, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, Major Katie Gunwell, the police department. So, yeah, we do this every day with or without this bill. Honestly, we've been doing it ever since I came on this department. It's part of our obligation to identify repeat addresses where we are sending police officers to the same address multiple times. We do that on a weekly basis where we identify what we call repeat addresses. Our job is to try to get to the root cause of the problem, to find out why there's crime there and try to resolve it so that we don't have to keep sending our officers to the same locations. Every time, we send an officer to a same location, it's taking away from other things that we really want them to do, which is that the police community engagement, the foot patrols, building the relationships with the community. So if we can resolve those kind of issues at these different locations, it's a win for everybody. So with that being said, we work very closely with landlords, with owners of properties. We give them suggestions, recommendations on what they can do. I can tell you, we've been very successful with building relationships. Sometimes it doesn't happen overnight, sometimes it takes months, sometimes it takes years to build those relationships. But once we get those relationships established, we've been very cooperative with them, seeing the cooperation, with them taking steps to improve their property, to call us when they see a crime. And that's part of the key to this. If they call us when a crime's being committed, that helps us on our end and we see that as cooperation. There's been maybe one or two owners that we've not had cooperation from, and it's been an uphill battle. So a bill like this would give us a little bit of this peace to help us get them on board with cooperating with us. We have people that are well-trained and well-diversed in giving recommendations on what property owners can do with their property to make it safer for their clients, for their residents that are staying there, for their business. And like I said, we've been very successful with getting people to cooperate. There's been maybe one or two in my career that I can recall that we didn't have that type of cooperation from and it made our job a little bit more difficult.
Thank you, Major Goodwin. Do we have any further, while Major Goodwin is with us, do we have any other questions for her? Mr. Pusky.
Yeah, I just want to thank the, Councilman Pusky, again, District Four. I just want to thank the police department again. When we first brought this bill out in my prior years, you know, there were some concerns, whatever else. We worked really hard with the law office and the police department. I know they're doing the best that they can. And I'm glad that Major Goodwin kind of mentioned that, you know, if I could have a magic wand and not pass this bill like any piece of legislation, we let it go, right? But there are people that just don't cooperate. And that's really where we want to get it. And this is a tool that could be used. And I like the fact that there's discretion. You know, when we pass legislation, it's not an automatic. And I think that some of the concerns that were originally raised with this bill related to that, that, you know, automatically you're going to get fined. You don't, if you heard, you know, the major speak, obviously, the law office, this is discretion, there's due process. I think that's the great part of this bill, is that it allows that. And I think that that's why it will be successful. Thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding ninety-four twenty? Well, I look forward to those amendments, Councilman Pusky. I know this has been a long, hard slog for you over the last five or six years. And there are certainly some issues in your district and in mine that could use the tools that are in this bill. Let's move along to bill number ninety-six dash twenty. This is an administration bill and I happen to be a co-sponsor.
Actually, Madam Chair, ninety-five, yeah.
I'm so excited about Old Mill High School. All right, ninety-five dash twenty. That's also your bill.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the virtual table is Captain Jones from the Fire Department and from law, Ms. Lori Blair Klosmeyer. In February of 2020, the Office of the Maryland State Fire Marshal adopted the 2018 additions of the NFPA One Fire Code and the NFPA One-O-One Life Safety Code into Maryland law. Intermodal County is currently enforcing the 2012 additions. Every county and municipality in Maryland has the opportunity to amend codes in ways that make them more restrictive, but not loosen any limitations imposed in the State Fire Prevention Code. The development of Bill ninety-five twenty was focused on three conditions. Eliminate contradictions in the adoption of the International Code Council's Building Codes, which was Bill sixty dash twenty with the Intermodal County Public Works Design Manual, reduce the number of amendments, making code compliance easier on the end users who navigate the codes across multiple jurisdictions, avoid amendments that may unfairly impose restrictions on one type of occupancy, any code modification for specific occupancies. The administration believes should be done in an individual bill with input from stakeholders. Following those principles, ninety-five twenty still contains a hundred and ninety-eight amendments in over twenty-nine pages, but provides a standard for fire and life safety that meet those conditions. I'm just going to go through a quick summary of some of the highlights. But before I do, I do want to give a special thank you to not just the Fire Department, but the Office of Law as well as council staff. This has been a, it's a monster of a bill. It's a very large and complicated bill that takes a long time to proof and make sure we got it right. So a particular thank you to Ms. Corby in council staff for slogging through all of it with our team. So I want to make sure that's clear, that a lot of work went in to get this right from a number of parties. So there are twenty-one previous amendments that have been repealed. The 2018 additions have come a long way in updating code to include amendments that jurisdictions had consistently had to make in amendments that jurisdictions consistently had to make in previous years. Seventy-eight amendments are for the purpose of renumbering of the thirty-six amendments shown in the capital letters indicating new matter added to code. Twelve are existing in Intermodal County Code, but are, in all caps, are noted as new law because of formatting, numbering, et cetera. Twenty-four are new Maryland code requirements that we, as a county, must adopt or make more restrictive. Those twenty-four new Maryland amendments are used to align, I keep using the word amendment, maybe I should say changes, are used to align the Fire Prevention Code with existing COMAR regulations. The balance of the changes are existing currently in Intermodal County Construction and Property Maintenance Codes. And so the enforcement of this bill will begin with new permits issued after the bill becomes law. Builders, developers, and the public will have access to the new code on the website and are notified of applicable codes during the permitting process. So there's no retroactivity, I think, is what I was trying to say. So with that, administration and our team are happy to answer any questions on this very important and complicated bill.
Do we have any questions on this very important and complicated bill? Oh, good. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. Of the sections of the bill that are in state code, are we more restrictive, any of those areas?
I'm going to ask either Office of Law or Captain Jones to weigh in on where we're going a little more restrictive.
Good afternoon. It's Captain Jones from the Office of Fire Marshal. In general, no. Many of the codes that we were handed down by the state, we copied directly.
That was easier than I thought. Thank you.
A lot of effort, like Mr. Barron said, and he said very well, a lot of effort went into this with the, special thanks to Lori Blair Klosmeyer and Josh Parsley recently of the County Auditor's Office, Greg Swain and his staff, and of course, Chief Wolford. We had a monumental task, and this has been months, and it was a big effort to housekeep and clean. The complications in building permitting had generated over the years some contradictions. And we went through a great effort to clean all that up, to make this hopefully the most end-user friendly bill that any of our developers have had in recent times. And we took great effort in avoiding any new restrictions in this bill. Because of our involvement in commissions and boards in the county, we really knew that sensitive issues such as agritourism, agriculture, community-based, assisted living, community-based recovery homes, legislation for short-term rentals, we really recognize that each of those specific things deserve on their own merit an opportunity for legislation with the stakeholders' input. So what we ended up with was a very long and detailed, but clean version of a user-friendly bill.
Fantastic. Thank you for your hard work, Captain Jones and team. Do we have any other questions regarding this bill? All right. Now we can talk about ninety-six dash twenty. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So joining me at the table, and I think because of the lateness of the morning, and we have some personnel changes, so let me make sure, yeah. Joining me from central service is Ms. Harris from Department of Public Works. We have Mr. Phipps from our school system. We have Mr. Shagnovich. And from law, we have Ms. Nederer. This bill, as Madam Chair stated, is a long time coming and is a very important step in the process. In 2017, the county acquired the property formerly known as the Papa John's Farm, which is located on New Cut Road in Severn. The county purchased the property to provide for construction by the Board of Education of the Old Mill West High School. The Board of Education desires to acquire the property from the county to begin construction of the school. So what the administration is requesting approval for in Bill ninety-six twenty is the disposition of the property to the Board of Education. If council approves, the Real Estate Division will proceed with the appropriate paperwork to transfer the property. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of my colleagues? This is Allison Pickard, Chair D Two. So obviously, this bill's going to pass. Mr. Shagnovic, any chance you can shed a little light on when we might see some groundbreaking activity right outside my neighborhood? When can I tell the neighbors that construction is, will be under siege?
Certainly. Alex Shagnovic, Chief Operating Officer. We're finalizing the plans, the construction documents and specifications. We've also been working with the regulatory authorities, specifically Public Works and State Highways, to finalize all the various multimodal transportation elements on the property and ironing out the last ingress, egress, and utility elements. So we anticipate hopefully being to wrap up all the regulatory reviews and be able to go out for the project to bid probably late winter, such that we could break ground, award a project, and break ground once the weather improves.
Well, that's exciting. Has the, have we settled on, and this is just me being, not keeping up with Board of Ed activity like I should? Have we settled? And this is just me being, not keeping up with Board of Ed activity like I should. Have we settled on the the? Seat capacity yet?
So the answer to that is no. The way a project is designed, there's a base size of the project. And then there is a pre-planned, pre-designed, and pre-reviewed ad alternate. So that will, we'll defer that decision until the bids come in, and it'll be a match of the latest demographic information. At that point in time, that we'll share with the state IAC to garner their support. And also to the degree that funding availability exists, again, at that point of time, recognizing what the physical. Bid results will be, the hard numbers.
Thank you. Mr. Pruski.
Councilman Pruski, District Four. Thank you, Mr. Shagnovic. Just a question. Again, Ms. Picker was asking about the groundbreaking. Is there a timeline for redistricting? I know that's a hot topic throughout the area, but in relationship to MEAT High School's renovation and other things. Is the school board having a discussion on that? Because I know we're talking about the general development plan, right? And schools are a big part of that. So I'm just curious if the school system said, okay, shovel ready here, and then redistricting here. And and the reason again why I ask that is because when we talk about the GDP, and of course, that's a separate bill, but we need also need to talk about. Do we have enough school properties, right, for for what we have or what we're doing? So if you could just address that with with me, the redistricting and all the impact of this.
Yes, sir. Again, Alex Shagnovic, Chief Operating Officer. We typically, for a brand-new ground-up school such as. The Old Mill West High School, will follow a parallel course of action as we did for the. Brand-new ground-up Crofton High School. We typically initiate those redistricting activities two, two years. Prior to when the anticipated occupancy date is going to be. To allow, A, that the appropriate amount of time for the work and consideration that goes into redistricting. And secondarily, to allow enough advanced notice for everybody to to do their, you know, required adjustments. Be they life adjustments or school assignment adjustments. Because you mentioned the MEAT High School project, we also anticipate that going out to bid. This spring as well, and to be under construction this spring as well, now that we've secured a federal grants. But because that is going to be a renovation while occupied project versus. The ground of greenfield development at the Papa John's site, we anticipate that the occupancy date of MEAT will be a little bit. Later than the Old Mill School, again, because of that. Construction while occupied and the safety considerations. All that being said, it's gonna be a very big redistricting effort, Mr. Pruski, and not only will, in my estimation. And again, this is preliminary, but not only will Old Mill and MEAT be involved. But clearly, we need to involve both the Glen Burnie and North County attendance areas at a minimum. Because we need to provide relief in in that outer band of the county, again, the Glen Burnie, North County, MEAT. And Old Mill all are part of that solution set. So I think it's going to be. Quite honestly, the largest redistricting effort that we have collectively undertaken. Actually, in my time here in Anarundel County. So I envision it to be a a heavy, albeit very important lift. My last comment is, as always, we are in close communications with planning and zoning. Our education facility master plan is correlated with the general development plans, and we've been keeping up with the. Changes in zoning that the general development plan will drive. That obviously speaks, Mr. Pruski, to to student capacity gains in the years ahead. But conversely, on the APFO side, we've also been dealing hand-in-hand with planning and zoning some of the. Regulatory and management tools that the county has. So I'm pleased to say that we've got a very good relationship with the county's Planning and Zoning Office. And I fully anticipate that continuing on a going-forward basis.
Thank you, Mr. Shagnovic. Can I just ask one more question because curiosity? Does the redevelop, the renovation plan of MEAT High School, does it add capacity to that high school or just renovate the current structure?
Again, Alex Shagnovic, Chief Operating Officer. It will only, it'll be nominal, minimal at best. It's really a programmatic that's all was not designed to really support the instructional delivery system that exists today. And many of the other projects are woefully undersized. We had a capacity addition project that was constructed onto MEAT High School, was a public-private partnership a number of years ago. That added the capacity numbers that we needed for this project. Chair Picker, however, it did not resolve many of the programmatic issues. So there will be, again, minimal, minimal capacity-related enhancements there. But the school gained tremendously in terms of its functionality, its circulation patterns, both inside and outside the school. And again, be much better positioned to support instruction going forward for the next, at least three to four decades easy.
Well, thank you. It's extremely exciting. Do we have any other questions? On ninety-six dash twenty. All right. Seeing none, we will move along. To ninety-seven twenty. Mr. Barron, that's your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the table is Ms. Kaylee Schultz from. The County Exec's Office, our Military and Veterans Affairs Liaison, former councilman. Mr. Pete Smith, and from law, Ms. Nederer. I am gonna turn it over to Ms. Schultz to describe Bill ninety-seven twenty.
Good morning, everyone. Actually, for one more minute. Good morning. Once again, Kaylee Schultz from the county Executive's Office. I will try to go over this as briefly as possible. It's a five-page bill. It kind of gives teeth to the Veterans Affairs Commission. So per the request of the Veterans Affairs Commission, Bill ninety-seven twenty modifies the terms and composition and meeting procedures of the commission. It also strengthens the powers and duties of the commission and makes some technical corrections. Of the thirteen voting members, the proposed code reads that they should be composed of a diverse body of all branches of military. We try to do that anyway, but we'd just like to now say that it's codified to do so. It expands the group and organizations and associations from which nine of the thirteen members can be selected from. At the turn of a new administration term, the terms of voting members shall become staggered, which is common practice among most boards and commissions. Right now, the Veterans Affairs Commissioners are coterminous. It also adds a clause for removal and attendance requirements that it was lacking before. Bill ninety-seven twenty adds four non-voting members that are active in the veterans' community, which the commission will recommend to the county executive for appointment. This bill also modifies to clarify and strengthen the powers and duties of the commission. The language is changed in Section three twelve A one oh nine to specify that the commission may perform the powers and duties listed under the section. But is not required to do so. In addition, paragraph one is changed to clarify that the commission is to establish a forum for all veterans of the county. The commission may review legislation and make recommendations to the county executive and county council. And the state and federal legislature and executive branches with the approval of the county executive. Other changes are made to clarify that the commission may advise the county executive on the coordination of services. Provide, provided to the veterans and their families, and identify and recommend sources of private and public financial assistance available. To improve and expand services or programs for veterans and their families. Pete Smith has helped with this bill immensely, as he's kind of the liaison to the Veterans Affairs Commission, and we are happy to answer any questions at this time.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Andrew Pruski, District Four. First of all, I want to thank former Councilman Pete Smith. We've talked about this commission for a while. I keep getting the emails from Howard County, and so this coming to fruition is actually a very positive thing. And kudos to the administration. And also, I know we didn't say this, Councilman. Former Councilman Smith and everyone, Happy Veterans Day. I know it's coming up, so we want to thank you for your service, and I'm glad that we're we're doing this. For those of you that don't know, Howard County has a very robust Veterans Commission, and they they work out. And I know that, you know, former Councilman Smith and others with the administration have tried to urge, to push. To do a little bit more in the the activity, and there there's a lot of issues. I mean, you talk about healthcare, TRICARE, some of the issues for our veterans. You talk about support services, mental health, you know, the the suits, delivery, that Councilman Smith and everything that goes. I I go through the litany, but again, this is a great start. I think it's well-needed, particularly for MEAT in our area. We're the largest employer in the state of Marin, right up our road. We have a lot of veterans in Anarundel County. So kudos again for bringing this forward, and thank you guys, and anything we can help you, we appreciate it. But again, Veterans Day, and Happy Veterans Day, and thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding Bill ninety-seven dash twenty? All right. Good to see you, former Councilman Smith. It's been a while. Happy Veterans Day, everybody. We will move along to ninety-eight dash twenty. This is a county executive bill. Mr. Barron. Mr. Barron.
I got booted and then brought back in, but you you didn't want to hear it from me for a second. Pete Barron with the administration here to talk about Bill ninety-eight dash twenty. Joining me at the table, we have our DPW Director, Mr. Phipps from DPW. Ms. Clooney from Finance, Ms. McQuade, our Director, and from Law, Ms. Kelly Kenny. Bill sixty-three, I'm sorry, Bill ninety-eight twenty. Is is changing something that happened in nineteen eighty and Bill sixty-three dash eighty-seven. Which created the Mayo Water Reclamation Subdistrict. Which established the fees and charges to recover the initial construction costs to provide. Public sewer to the Mayo Peninsula. Those fees included connection charges for existing developed lots and service availability charges for undeveloped lots. The original construction included the sand filter and wetland treatment system. Of the Mayo Water Reclamation Facility and all the collection and conveyance piping and pumping stations to serve the community. In twenty-eighteen, the Mayo Water Reclamation Facility was decommissioned as a treatment plant. And replaced with a sewer force main that conveys wastewater from Mayo to the Annapolis Water Reclamation Facility for treatment. There is no longer need for the Mayo Water Reclamation Subdistrict. And the different application of utility charges that apply to the Mayo Subdistrict. Now that the sewage is treated in the same manner as all county wastewater customers. And the infrastructure is is over thirty years and beyond the term of the original bond issuance. This legislation requires all properties in the Mayo Subdistrict to pay the same environmental protection fee. And capital facility connection charges that is paid by all other properties connected to the county's wastewater system. And eliminate eliminates the service availability charge. Our our team here is happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the administration on Bill ninety-eight dash twenty? Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I think this, I think this question is for Mr. Phipps. I I'm just, help me understand the practical impact. Their Mayo Reclamation's been decommissioned, all the, all the water's going elsewhere. And so we're changing which fee is paid where? Does it have an impact on the existing homes and any fees that they're currently paying? Or is this only moving forward for new homes? I'm just, I'm a little confused in reading the bill exactly what the practical implication is.
Okay, Chris Phipps, Director of Public Works. So the bill, what it does is aligns the Mayo customer base. Consistent with the rest of the county customer base that relates to sewer service and fees. So when the Mayo Subdistrict was created back in nineteen eighty-seven, they were exempt from the. What we call the Environmental Protection Fee, which is a surcharge on your usage bill. And that that money goes in, that fund, when the the funding that comes from the EPF. Goes into the debt service fund to for repair, replacement, infrastructure, asset, useful life, replacement stuff. So all the infrastructure rebuilding is where that funding goes. As opposed to the capital facility connection charge, which is for growth. So Mayo was always exempt from that EPF, so they were never paying that charge. Instead, there there was a very unique funding and fee schedule created. Because they were, you know, creating a sewer system out of, you know, whole cloth. And one of the the challenges was future beneficiaries in that service area were gonna benefit from the. Original existing homes that were being converted from failing septics to public sewer. So they paid a certain amount, a set amount, the the capital facility connection charge at the time, and they could pay that over. They had to put a third down, and two-thirds were over thirty years. But for, but for future properties, they were assessed what's called a service availability charge. Which was, if you had the potential for connection in the future, you're paying a thirty-year annual assessment. And it was like two hundred and thirty dollars a year. That gave you the opportunity, when you were ready to connect, to connect. So that's because the the construction of the facility, the original infrastructure, the bonds have been paid. You know, the the infrastructure's complete. Those fees are, you know, being eliminated because they are nowhere else in the county, these service availability charges. As well, we're applying environmental protection fee charges to existing and future customers of Mayo. So there will be a change to the existing customer in the service area. They're gonna be assessed a, this new factor of surcharge.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I ask a couple of follow-ups?
You sure can.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jessica Hare, District Seven. So are there folks then who've paid that two hundred and thirty dollar annual fee for, say, twenty years? Who now essentially would lose that money and be charged a capital connection fee instead? Or do they somehow get grandfathered in, or is that money that's been paid in so far somehow accounted for in any future connection?
It would be accounted for in a future connection. So basically, the way the bill reads is that would be truncated. Any further payment into that service availability charge ends. And that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily a connection fee. That was a sort of down payment. To toward the construction cost of the original infrastructure, the plant itself, the pipes in the street, the pumping stations. And whatnot. So because otherwise, all that cost would have been borne by the original petitioners.
Okay, and last question then. What is the environmental fee that will, they will now see on all of their bills if this bill passes?
So the way it it is, it's a thirty percent surcharge. And the flat rate, they're on a flat rate because they're not metered, they're not on public water, is sixty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents a quarter. So you multiply that by four, so their 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 annual fee right now for usage is two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Thirty percent of that is eighty-three dollars and fifty cents. So that's the new fee that they would see. For someone that, now, also, you know, there'd be a a a net redux, a reduction. For somebody who's paying the two hundred and thirty-three dollars for the service availability charge now, and has years remaining on that. They would see actually a reduction, so two thirty-three minus one hundred and forty-nine, I mean, two, eighty-three fifty. It's like a hundred and forty-nine dollar reduction for them.
Okay. I I think I get it. Thank you. That was very helpful.
Are there any other questions regarding ninety-eight dash twenty? Okay, let's move along to Bill ninety-nine dash twenty, which is my bill. I'd like to co-sponsor this bill with the Office of Law, if that's possible. We're gonna have to talk this out a little bit. It's actually just a clarifying bill. The Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay Area that we passed back September eighth, Bill number sixty-four dash twenty. It came to our attention that maybe not all the legal minds read a certain clause the exact same way. But I think we've settled on this clarifying language with help from folks. So. I'm just gonna read the legislative summary, the last paragraph. Bill ninety-nine dash twenty clarifies when the requirements for conditional use apply. And provides more specificity with respect to a conditional use requirement that addresses. and provides more specificity with respect to a conditional use requirement that addresses a bulk regulation. This bill provides that if a use is allowed as both permitted use and a conditional use in the applicable zoning districts, the use is allowed as permitted use, and the conditional use requirements do not apply. So all that, to me, says is the Glen Burnie Sustainable Community Overlay area allows for flexibility when redeveloping parcels, and as we go from zoning districts R10 all the way up through W1, uses that are permitted and/or conditional in a variety of ways in those different districts, if it is permitted in one of those, it is now permitted in the redeveloped project. But that's very clear to me. So if it's not clear to anyone else, we have, as described, I'll let Lynn Miller or Ms. Klaus Meyer. But before that, would the administration like to weigh in on Bill 99-20?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pete Barron with the administration, and yes, joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Miller from OPZ, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer from Office of Law. I think you stated it well. I think the the Bill 9920 is intended to just put to bed a question that I think was, I think we all understood the intent of 6820 was to accomplish this goal, but making clear in the bill language, as we looked at it a little further, so some discussions had the way the administration is viewing 9920 is, it is a simple clarifying bill to implement 6820. And with that, we fully support 9920. And happy to turn it over to Ms. Miller or Ms. Blair Klausmeyer to dive into the legal bits a little bit more.
I have, I left out Ms. Schuet in getting this bill drafted.
And Ms. Schuet.
Thank you. Allison Picker, Chair D2. Does anyone have any questions about 99-20? Crystal clear? Yes. All right. Thank you, everybody. Are we ready to move on to our last item on the agenda today, which is Resolution Number 46-20, Mr. Barron? That is an administration resolution.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the virtual table is Ms. Carrigan from Budget, Mr. Shagnovic from and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer is sticking with me at the table from, and her cat, from from the Office of Law. Resolution 4620, confirm the county executive's support for the FY22 Capital Improvement Program request submitted by the Anarongo County Board of Education to the Interagency Committee on School Construction for Funding under the state's Public School Construction Program. This is done on an annual basis. We do have a corrective amendment that we will offer at the council meeting on the 16th to correct the error in the name of the President of the Board of Education. So you should have a copy of that amendment already. If not, please let me know, and I'll share it, but it simply identifies the current Chair of the, or President of the Board of Ed. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, and I've got Mr. Shagnovic here for all the
Do we have any questions about Resolution 46-20? Yay. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. Mr. Shagnovic, you can go about your business. With that, that concludes our agenda for this work session. We are back in legislative session on November 16th at 6:00 PM. So with that, have a great day, everybody. Thank you.